February first, two thousand and twenty-two. My name is Carrie Martnik. I'm the Planning Board Chair. Before we get started, I just have a few notes to read. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and Act Relative to Extending Certain COVID-nineteen Measures Adopted During the State of Emergency. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting may feature public comment. To confirm that everybody anticipated in the agenda or remotely present and can be heard, please state in the affirmative. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Amy Peretzky?
Yeah.
Anthony Biden?
Here.
Michelle Gillespie?
Here.
And Millie Milton?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Fred Litchfield?
Here.
Bob Federico?
Here.
Okay. Great. For presenters and applicants on the agenda, the chair will invite each speaker on the, or excuse me, the chair will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make a presentation and speak to their application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer or not speaking and to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others do so through the chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the board or committee will be conducted by rule call vote. For items of public comment, after members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. By phone dial star nine to raise your hand in ways to be recognized by the chair, please note the party of phone number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen in ways to be recognized by the chair. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, the chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. The rest is not relevant to this meeting, so why don't we get started with the agenda? First on the agenda this evening, we have the continued discussion regarding the proposed zoning bylaw amendments for two thousand and twenty-two annual town meeting. So let me pull up. This time, I just loaded town email on my computer here, so hold on, let me switch over. Or unless, why don't we start with breweries? Or Amy, did you send something? Oh, okay, do you want to?
It was the same. It was just cleaned up, but I can share it if you want.
Sure, that would be great. Or I can pull. I see it here now. Do you want to pull it up or do you want me to pull it up?
Sure, I'll pull it up. It's pretty, um, I mean, we've talked about it a lot, so.
Okay.
Okay. What I did was just clean it up. I went to, um, the two thousand and eighteen annual town meeting to see how they worded to put the footnote in. So that's really the only change I have, uh, is I wrote to see if the town will vote, you know, the stuff we need for town meeting, and I'm sure, town council checks it. But I wanted to verify how you added a footnote. So what I wrote on the comments over here is what I, um, what I used. I just cut and pasted what we did in two thousand and eighteen and used it for this. So, but just to get into the brewery, what, where we left off, we had the four definitions, the brew pub, the nano brewery, the micro brewery, and then the, the larger brewery. And in my opinion, after listening to everybody's comments and feedback, I'm not sure if we should go with the, the one without the numbers yet, just because we don't want to have a lot of traffic. We don't want a big brewery like Sam Adams. Like, my whole purpose here was to go for a craft brewery and nano brewery and a brew pub in Northborough. So, um, so for the use table, what I did was a nano brewery and the brew pubs were the smaller ones, so I did what Chewsbury and others did. And it's pretty much the same as what a restaurant is with alcoholic beverages, except for, um, oh, it says Planning Board on industrial, like we talked about last time. And then for micro brewery, it's in the same districts, except for I didn't allow it downtown because it's, um, the bigger of the two. And, and maybe we don't have enough parking downtown to have a bigger micro brewery or... So I don't know. Does any board members have any comments, any questions on what zones or? Has anybody thought about it? Is everybody ready to go forward with it? I think we've talked about it a lot, so.
Do we have any? We have no further outstanding items? Oh, sorry, Millie, did I cut you off? Were you gonna say something?
No.
Okay. Um, there are no further outstanding items? Those are the only outstanding items on this one?
Yeah, I didn't have any outstanding questions. The only really outstanding was where we wanted to place it. And I did include the definition for brewery, distillery, winery, in case in the future we want to include it, like other towns, so we don't have to go back and do it again. But I don't know, I sent it out over the weekend, so I'm hoping everybody gets a chance to look at it. I might, maybe I sent it out last week. So it's the same one. Sorry.
No, go ahead. I was just gonna say, I have no further. I thought this was in good shape. I don't know. Do any board members have any additional comments for this one?
I don't.
Okay.
I guess one question I would have would be for Fred and Bob, under the footnote with the parking. Um, right now, we have one space for every three seats for a restaurant. But since like, um, the craft brewery seems to be more couples, I was wondering if it should be one space for every two seats? Because the feedback I got from other towns were, make sure you have enough parking. So I was wondering from Fred and Bob, if you had any input. Is it a big deal if it's one space every two seats, or should we go back to like the restaurants, one space per every three seats? One town actually had one space for every two and a half seats. I don't know. I guess they couldn't decide. But, um, to Fred or Bob, do you have any input or?
I would, I mean, I would go either way. I mean, making a special requirement just for a brewery or brew pub, which is fine, but this should probably be, instead of a footnote, it should probably be in the parking loading requirements later on in the book.
Yeah, I could do that, too. I started doing that, but then there's a lot more zoning changes. So if you want me to do that, but I know we're at the very end.
Well, the, the thing is, if you, if you're working on parking on a specific item, put that parking in the parking chapter. That's all I'm saying, because if you start scattering stuff all over the book, nobody's gonna be able to understand it.
Yep.
Okay, so is it, this is different than the rest of the district, this parking?
There is a very big parking section, and there would have to be a lot of changes made. So I thought it was easier as a footnote. We have a lot of, this is the fifteen footnote. We have a lot of footnotes for little things. So the easiest way to do it right now is to add it by a footnote.
So I'm just curious, what, um, what is in there now in the parking section that would, that this would, for this district? Wait, so located in business or industrial, one space for every two seats, plus one. So this doesn't exist at all? There's no number of parking spaces for, that would suit this now?
Right, yeah. I can find what page it's on. I know it's in seven oh nine. I think. But I was gonna go that route, but it was a lot. Okay, so off-street parking and loading is seven eighty-seven. So I guess since I didn't do, well, you'd have to put it in commercial uses on page seven eighty-eight. And it lists one restaurant bar, one space for every four seats. Retail store, three. And then it would have to be in industrial uses, too, since it's by special permit, yeah. In industrial park services, it says one space every three seats. That's where I got that information from before. I can easily add it in there and send it out before the third.
So do you think industrial is covered by number five in there, or you think it would have to be brewery? It would have, oh, actually, it doesn't have a definition in industrial.
Right, it doesn't have a definition, yeah.
Oh, got it, got it.
I think it would have to go number six.
Yeah, that might be just a little cleaner.
Yeah, I can do it that way. I think I didn't at first because we were still talking about so many different things. I wasn't gonna go through all that if, if we weren't gonna do it. And, and all the other bullets are like, you know, cottage dwelling should not exceed one thousand sixteen hundred square feet. There are a lot of little footnotes
Mm-hmm.
that they, they didn't go back into the book and fix it, but add it as a footnote. But if that's the way, um, Bob thinks it can be done, I can, I can pull that together tomorrow.
Would I be wondering, um, would we want to make it similar to a restaurant, it one per three seats? Or what, what, did you see things another, what made you pick two seats? Just it seemed?
Just because I thought a lot of, it might be a lot of couples going to more of a craft brewery, you know, where with the restaurant, maybe it's more families, so they do it one every three.
Mm-hmm.
So I thought if there's a lot of couples and even single people going, then you need more parking.
Hmm.
But we can do every, one every three. Like I said, the other town had one every two and a half. But but that was Westborough's one complaint, is I would do more parking.
Millie, just out of curiosity, as a business owner, not that you have a brewery, but what, do you have any insight or how you've set up your own parking or any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I do think that, um, it's a little interesting because it does depend on your, kind of depend on, on your seating. So if you have people that are standing around, that might be a bit different than they are as seated at a micro brewery or restaurant. If you have, uh, movable tables or fixed tables or fixed seats, that type of arrangement would, um, definitely impact what you would need for parking.
And everything's been changing. I don't even know how exact a science it is, because with COVID, everybody added outdoor picnic tables, yet they already had all their parking. So.
And to be honest with you, a lot of people are now just Ubering, so I don't feel like there's the same demand for specific parking as there has been in the past, especially if they're going to a place that they, they might be drinking.
Bob, do you know something?
Yeah, just, it, it, I'm just saying, just be careful about, um, the loose, you know, the, the use and changing of zoning requirements during the pandemic. Because when the governor allowed outdoor dining, he relaxed a lot of the zoning rules, banners, parking requirements, you know, all that stuff. So, um, you know, if, if you're going, if you're using the model that we're currently using under COVID, um, what's gonna happen is that's gonna go away, and we're gonna have to revert back to the original parking designs that were already laid out. If those restaurants want to continue doing what they're doing, they're gonna have to go back to the ZBA or the Planning Board and reexamine the parking calculations. So I'm just putting that out there.
Okay, so you mean if people went to outdoor dining that didn't have it before, they're gonna have to go back and ask for more parking?
Or they're, or they're gonna have to have their parking, you know, second, let me get this over, so I'm not looking off-screen here. Oh, um, they're, they're gonna have to, if people who, if people who are currently using outdoor dining in a parking spot because of COVID, after COVID emergencies are done, if they want to maintain that parking, um, reduce parking because they're using outdoor seating, they're gonna have to go back to the towns and rewrite and reexamine the parking.
Okay, but as far as our town, we, like, before Kathy left, she said that we don't need anything in our bylaws to allow outdoor seating. We allow that?
Yeah, the outdoor seating is fine, but, but, but the thing is, you have to take into account for outdoor seating is that, um, you know, your septic loading, if you're running on a septic system, it, it counts for your occupancy load. And if the outdoor seating is on a parking spot, um, or on a bunch of parking spots, and it affects more than ten, it's gonna go back to the Planning Board because you guys have a special permit requirement for any modification of a parking lot more than ten spaces. So if Casaware wants to keep the outdoor dining in the parking lot, they've gotta come back to you folks to get a special permit um, to, to recalculate the parking load.
So for, sorry, for one space, I'm sorry, one space for every two seats, that's creating more parking. Do you think that's too much parking? If we're saying like people maybe, oop, they find Uber or?
What we have now, too, is in commercial, we have one space for every four seats, but in industrial, we wrote one space for every three seats. So which do you choose? They're different. We didn't write it, but. I think definitely one for every three at minimum.
Mm-hmm.
Versus one for every four.
And I don't feel super strongly. I'm just wondering, I'm just trying to think, what are the pros and cons of, um, whether we do, if we got too much parking for one for every two seats? There might be a lot. I don't know. Other board members, do you have any preference or thoughts?
Maybe that's why the other town went for every two and a half.
I couldn't agree.
So, so, yeah, so basically two for every five. Because two's too many and three's not enough.
Carrie?
Yeah.
The, um, seems to me like one space for every two seats might be a little bit high. I think if you can find, uh, if we can figure out why it's one for three or one for four in the industrial, that might be good, and then we could just try to be consistent with that. Um, I think one for three is probably where you want to end up. The other thing is that perhaps Bob can speak to what our discussions were with the Tavern in the Square folks when they came in to amend their special permit. They were talking about, uh, parking and septic loading, and they had a slightly different take on it because they had people standing at tables and they weren't actually in seats or on stools. And I forget what the loading, uh, ratio was for that at that time. Maybe Bob remembers. I'm not, I don't remember, but I know there was a difference between the seats and the stools or the counter tables.
Right.
The, um, excuse me, the, uh, parking loading, in terms of how many people are in a restaurant, starts with the building code. And it talks about occupancy and whether or not you're at chairs at tables or booths or standing room only. And that is a formula that gets figured out at the time of the application for the building program. Um, so once we have a, um, say, an occupancy count in a restaurant, um, that, I think, is when you start to apply, you know, how many spaces for each seat or each person in the building. Okay, I mean, you could have, you know, like Amy said, you could have a bunch of guys going out on a Saturday, there's four guys in a car. You could have a bunch of college kids coming home for the weekend, you've got four people, there's four cars. You know what I'm saying? Uh, or you could have a family of four in one vehicle. So it's, it's gonna run the gamut. Um, but the number of parking spaces is typically driven by how many people are allowed in the building. And that's a building code calculation. And again, it goes by, um, how many people are standing, how many people are sitting at, like, stools and chairs and at the bar rail? And then how many people are sitting at, uh, tables and booths?
Mm-hmm.
So, so it's that, that's a very fluid, um, occupancy count, you know, it, I, I, I would think it, you know, having seen what's happened out at Treetop and the parking issues out there, and fortunately, they've had the land to expand. If you get into a si- situation where parking is at a premium on a given property here in town, uh, you know, you run the risk of overcrowding it, and, and then, then, then there's a major headache on everybody's hands. Um, so, you know, I, I would say, you know, in the past, a lot of places have, you, you folks have approved places where, um, a reserved parking area is on the plans, and it's reexamined after a year or two. And if, um, the parking, if you folks deem the parking needs to be expanded, uh, the, the original site plan or the original buildout has room to expand the parking. So that could be an option for you folks as a planning board, write it into the conditions. Say, you know, right now, we're gonna go with one spot for every, uh, three people. Um, but, you know, we want you to put thirty-five or forty spots aside for potential future use, and, and we'll look at that calculation down the road after a couple of years. Because you never know how these things gonna take off.
That's interesting. Okay, do we want to, with that in mind, do we want to land at three seats because it's at least consistent with commercial? And then does that sound okay to the board or?
Yep, and the reserved parking is a good idea. There's a soccer, too. We had a lot of questions, and even one of their conditions was they come back in a year.
It must be coming up soon.
Right, but because of COVID, I don't know if, when they opened, you know?
Oh, that's true. They're not even open yet. They're still being built. Okay. All right. Any other outstanding items? Can we move on from this one? Looks like it's in good shape.
Okay, so since they're pretty much due today, can we vote that we'll accept it, but, um, do you want me to write it to add it into the parking versus a footnote? And I'll just send it off to Bob and Fred to review, and it will go to town council?
Sure, I think that sounds good, and then.
Because everything else will stay the same, but it's just where it falls in the book.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so we'll go through all the bylaws that we think are done, vote on them tonight, we'll send them to town council, and then we'll do a public hearing, um, probably in March. After we know we have time to get any answers we need from town council, either maybe the first meeting in March, we'll do a, um, public hearing.
Sounds good. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, do we want to do, do you want to do votes as we go through each one, or we can wait till the end? Any thoughts? Just do it. All right. Is there a motion to, let's see, what was our motion normally? Fred, do you remember our motion for this, to move the bylaw forward? It's just a vote. It's not a true vote, I suppose.
I'm guessing it's just a, a vote to accept the documentation that you have before you tonight, so that we can put a date to it, because there are several versions. And then agree to forward that to the town administrator for his, uh, incorporation into the ward.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept the bylaw? The brewery bylaw is written as of one thirty-one to move forward pending council review and a hearing.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, if you could stop sharing, I'm gonna actually, I'm not sure if Attorney Pember's on the line, but just in case he is, I want to move over to his bylaw proposal. Let's see, I'm gonna pull that up. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, can you see this? The, the memo here, everybody? So first we have, why don't we take care of this first one? So the first article here, we looked at before, we've made no changes to it. There was no real discussion regarding this. This was a housekeeping item. Is there any, are there any open items for this article that we have before voting? Okay, is there a motion to move forward on the article to? Let's see, what would you call this? The article to strike language from the, is this in the site plan? From the site plan review process, design review process as of December thirty-first, pending town council and a hearing.
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, the next article is regarding thirty-seven South Street, and, uh, we did receive, the last open item for this one was to, uh, we requested a letter from all of the abutters, and the final letter came in. Did everybody receive the letter from the abutter? Okay.
Yes.
Attorney Pember, I'm not sure if he's on the line or not. If we need him, he, he said he was available. I don't know if we, does any, does anybody have any questions for Attorney Pember at this point?
No.
Okay, are we, no further outstanding items from the board? Is there a motion to move forward on the Northborough zoning map for thirty-seven South Street as of December thirty-first to progress forward, pretend, um, pending town council and public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Amy?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Carrie's an aye. Okay, let's see. I think that was it for that one. I'm gonna stop sharing. Just gonna write this down. So we have, uh, duplex. Thirty-seven South. Thirty-seven South. Okay, next we have, let's see. Do we wanna look at the sign bylaw? All right, does anyone wanna pull that up? Amy, do you have the most up to date? Do you wanna?
Sure. I did send one right before the meeting, but it was to renumber and put the definitions in alphabetical order, cause it just made most, the most sense. Because they're in alphabetical order now.
Okay, let me just.
So I did send it out over the weekend. I don't, I wanna start with, did anyone have any questions? Like, I, we've gone through a lot of this, I don't know if you want me to go through the whole thing again. I did add this part at the top that I'm sure will go to town council. Because we added externally illuminated and internally illuminated, I have to, I had to redo all the numbers. Put it in alphabetical.
Okay, so that reminds me, why don't, um, hold on, I will, I just wanna pull up so everybody knows the questions that were sent, so were set up for a town council. Um, Fred is helping to facilitate that, and we didn't expect answers back tonight, so that's okay. Um, but just so everybody knows what questions were asked. Um, a question for, let's see.
They were mine, so I can, I can explain it if you want.
Sure.
Okay, I asked, I don't know if anyone else asked questions, I had two questions for the signs. One of them talked about, when I reviewed all the other towns, some of them had special permit process, so say Selfboro, you were allowed twenty-five square feet in the downtown of, for a sign, but you could go up to thirty feet, but thirty-five feet, but you needed to have a special permit, and you had to set certain criteria. My question for him was, is a use variance allowed for a sign? Cause I know in the past, we've done use variances, but it was interesting that a lot of the other towns allowed either a bigger sized sign or a different type of sign, but only by a special permit process. And since a sign isn't a use, I just had a quick question for town council is, can you have a use variance for a sign? I was just curious. I didn't see any other towns that it mentioned that. And then for the second question I asked him was, oh, Bob had mentioned that if the sign isn't approved in thirty days, that it's an automatic approval. Um, I look, tried to look that up too, and I didn't see that, like, there are certain special permits or A and Rs, like an A and R in the zoning in the, um, the, the state code says, yeah, it's automatically approved in twenty-one days if we don't, um, bring it forth. But there was nothing about signs, like a sign permit.
I was referring to the state building code.
Okay.
It talks about a thirty day, if, if somebody gives me an application, and I don't either reject it for, for, in writing, or approve it, it's considered to be approved, and they can go ahead and install it. What I had said before, um, was that in terms of design review, that the applicant should really go through design review first before he applies for the sign permit, because design review could certainly take up a big chunk of that thirty days. Okay, so, you know, when they get, they send me an application, we stamp it in, and the clock starts ticking. So, you know, the procedure should be, if they wanna put up a sign, if you, they, and it has to go through design review, it goes through a design review first, and then I get some sort of a approval, um, to go ahead and, 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 and they can process the application. On the other hand, and I, again, I ask this question, design review is, um, advisory only. Um, and they have no, um, statutory authority to approve or deny. And, and I, and I question the mechanics of, of how, you know, if that's what you wanna do, design review doesn't have any, really doesn't have any teeth. You know, because they're, they're advisory to a higher board. I'm just curious, I'm just curious to see how the legalities of that would fold out.
Okay, I did, to follow up, I did check with other towns, there was a town that used design review for their signs. Shrewsbury now for their downtown, all signs need to go through the planning board for approval. So, and I actually updated our signs, so the design review committee only, um, looks at the freestanding or electronic signs and the signs in downtown business. That's what I saw for, like, the towns that went through design review or special permit approval, it was the downtown signs, because like Northborough's not the only one trying to update their downtown. Shrewsbury just wrote a whole new bylaw just for the downtown.
So not every single sign, or like if you update it, it's only in this scenario, whether that's one of these types or it's downtown, but not every single sign comes through.
Yeah, not every sign, because after we talked about it last time, it did, it seemed like a lot.
Yeah.
So, um, electronic message centers, which we don't see much of, that's another one that I saw town send to a planning board for approval. Uh, we could choose that if we want to, but, but, um, there was other towns that sent it to design review, so.
And Bob, does your clock start ticking when they file for the building permit? Or your clock starts ticking as soon as they submit their whole application?
As soon as the application is complete. Um, so if somebody submits a stack of papers and they're missing a couple items, um, I tell them, I can't issue the permit, and I tell them what I'm missing, and once they deliver me the complete application, that's when the clock technically starts ticking. Um, more often than not, the sign permits I've been getting are pretty complete right up front. Um, we, we get, you know, other types of permits come in, uh, with varying degrees of completeness. Um, but by and large, the, the sign stuff comes through, because it's basically, there's only three or four sign companies that do a lot of work in town, and they, and they know the rules, and they know what we're looking for for documentation. So, you know, for most of the local sign manufacturers, it's, it comes in and it's one shot across my desk. You know, where we do have some other issues is, um, for signage, is when the sign company is from out of town or out of state or out of the region.
So is that a question, like if someone needs a permit for a dishwasher, like an air conditioning unit, if they submit an application, then it has to be approved in thirty days?
I have thirty days to look at it. If I deny it in thirty days, I have to deny it in writing, explaining why I denied it. If I don't look at it, they have the legal right to consider it to be, um, approved. It's like a, it's like a defect in the, in a, in a filing situation. Okay, and that's what building permits only. So, so if they give me something, and it's missing a lot of paperwork, and I review it in ten days, and they come back to me, um, with that updated paperwork, that thirty day clock starts again. Because I still don't have a complete application.
Okay. I have, can I ask a question? Thank you. So while Amy's on this, can she define what she means she's added in the word "or altered"? What does that mean to you?
To me?
No, I'm asking Amy, since she wrote this.
Okay.
Well, if you, the direction of all erected is actually a lot, it's very disparate.
No, it's not, uh, it's not-
I know, I'm going into altered, and the altered is where you change the sign, like non-conforming signs shall not be altered in large design, it's, it's a standard word that is used in zoning.
So, in other words, on the message center, if you were to have St. Bernard Dets has an electronic message center, if they would change something or alter something on there, you're going to tell them that they have to go before a design review committee for any changes they've made, the way I read this, correct?
No, it doesn't have to do with-
It does, it says electronic message center in any district.
Right, but it doesn't have to do with the words on the sign, like if I go back to-
But if they change something on that, anything that they change.
But electronic signs are changing all the time.
You know, what if they changed part of the frame, it got dented or anything, it's altering? I just feel like this is excessive. I feel like this is really excessive.
If it's altered from the design, but if it's the same exact, if it's a repair or maintenance, that's not considered the same. It's not-
That's why altered is very generalized. So, I mean, like, the comment that I'm making is, somebody who may not like these signs could use the opportunity to shut down the sign if you can't define what altered means. Like, obviously, the message is changing constantly, but what if they have to make, you know, what if they alter the sign somehow by the framing or something? I mean, that's, this is just very general, and I think you need to be more specific about it, since, I mean, I know personally, you don't like the electronic messaging signs, but they are around town, and I would hate to see it's an opportunity to do away with them.
If the framing changed-
My, my next, excuse me?
I just wanna answer the question first, if the framing changed, that would be considered a new sign?
But if they're repairing the framing?
No, repair, it's called out that repairs, there's somewhere in here that talks about repairs aren't included. There's a repair section. I'd have to find it, but it was, oh, here it is.
So, if you could go back up, Amy, to number three?
Right here, word in the-
Why did you feel the need to put the word "new" in?
Just to make it more specific.
So, in other words, if somebody wants to, um, they added a partner to their law firm or something where they're just adding a word onto it, they have to start all over again and adhere to all the new sign bylaws?
That's what it would say, even if it didn't have the word "new" there.
Excuse me?
Even if the word "new" wasn't there, it would, it would mean that, and it, it's the same for all towns.
I don't, yeah, I don't necessarily agree with that. And then number four, five, six, and seven, you all, you added that in yourself?
Yeah, I added, everything underlined was a change.
And then you also added in no use variance is allowed for any signs, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Did you, was a follow-up question on that, Michelle?
No, she's just scrolling down, I'm just working through them as she's trying to understand why she made all these changes or additions.
I added no use variance because we had it down here, and instead of keeping, writing use variance over and over again, I was gonna take out this and just include it at the top.
So just going back to three for a second, um, the, if you didn't have your edits there, the relettering of a sign shall be equivalent to the erecting of a sign, except when the wording is reproduced.
I could take out "no," it, it would mean the same, cause if I go up to erecting, the definition of erecting is any installing, constructing, reconstructing, replacing, relocating, relettering.
Huh.
As specifically provided. Extending, altering, or other side, so altering is already in there, part of the definition. Like, any change to a sign is considered a new sign. If it's exactly the same, if they're repairing it or repainting it, and Bob can speak to this, I mean, this isn't something that I changed. Any maintenance of an old sign is considered the same sign. So, I could take out "new," and it really wouldn't make a difference, so if it makes, Michelle, um, or everybody wants to take out the word "new," I thought it just, it tied in and made it make more sense, but it, it doesn't really change number three at all.
So it's not adding a restriction, it's just clarifying with the restriction already there?
Yeah.
Not restriction, but the guideline, okay.
Yep, so should I take it out if it, if it doesn't really matter to me? Some things weren't clear when I originally read it, so I added the word to make it clear, but it really doesn't change anything.
Right.
The reason I brought it up, Amy, is that not only could be lettering, but what if you altered the sign by the change of, if it's a, you know, vinyl versus a fabric versus a brick, you know? I just, you added the word in "or altered." So I think-
And, and I could take that out too, cause that really doesn't change anything. If we look at erected, it actually says altered. So, I mean, it's, it's, I thought it was making it clearer, but it, it doesn't change the statement. Because erected, when I first looked at erected, I thought that meant just the process of putting it, you know, of constructing it.
Could you just go back up through erected for a second?
Sure. But when you redirect it, it covers, it's all those things, and it's the same in every town. See, it even has altering right there. So adding altering or adding-
And it specifies shall not include repair maintenance, I see.
Yep. So if, if that, if it makes Michelle, you know, feel better, I can take out those two words, cause it doesn't add anything. It, to me, it just clarified it. But it really, it doesn't add anything.
But do other board members have thoughts on that, or?
I honestly think it's easier to leave it out, because I think it may be actually more confusing to put it in and say, well, what does it mean there versus what it means up there, are they two different things?
Yep, and that's fine, I just, I just took them both out, if it makes it easier. But it, but like you said, it didn't change anything.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, so we have a couple of outstanding questions in with town council.
Are you talking about for the entire bylaw or just this section?
Oh, the entire bylaw, do you have other?
Oh, yeah, yeah, let's go down it.
Okay, sure. Which, uh, which section would you like to go to?
Okay, again, with your zoning enforcement officer again told the board that the design review committee, um, you know, his interpretation of the design review committee, so in number nine, I think that should be remu- removed, I don't think it should be in there as far as after review by the design review committee. He's already given you his interpretation of why he doesn't think it should go before the design review committee, so I'm suggesting that be taken out.
So, let's see, construction, location, free center.
That has to do with what freestanding signs.
Um, and Amy, what was the heart of putting this in here from your perspective?
Well, when I first started on board in two thousand and fourteen, freestanding signs, electronic signs, they all came in front of design review committee. So I actually didn't think it would, and then they went by the wayside. You know, now, the applicants come in and say, oh, the sign, we'll, we'll give the sign later, we'll pass it in later, we'll get a sign permit later. But when I first started, we did review all the signs, and I wasn't even on design review, but they came in front of the planning board as part of the site plan, and the design review had reviewed it. And I, and I don't know why it went by the wayside, but I wanted to add back in, because it seemed like a step that had been skipped. And, and I'm sure Bob goes through all this, but there were all sorts of like, a lot of other towns are like, it has to be fifteen feet off the road, and it can't be more than so high. Like, there were a lot of things to the sign that should probably be reviewed, and Bob's probably reviewing them.
Well, the, um, I, I just wanna clarify one thing, was it every sign that came to the town that had to go to a design review? Because typically with design review, you're looking at the site plan and everything else and all that business. And when you're doing a special project that requires a special permit or a variance, you know, it is very common to have the signs involved. But, you know, just to have, just to say we're putting up a new sign at the liquor store, um, I don't think that was the intent, and, um, I'd like to know where in design review requirements that says every sign needs to go through it, cause that's not in the design review, um, in the code right now. You can make the signs adhere to design review if it's going through design review process. You can have the, the special permit granting authority say anything they want. But outside of that, um, every sign that comes to my desk is looked at for height and size and what it's gonna say, and, you know, and all the other nuances, the- You know, and all the other nuances that come with it. So, you know, it's, you know, I am looking at the other parameters in terms of how many signs, how big can it be? You know, the most common thing is, you know, people want a bigger sign than they want, and I can't allow it, so it goes to the ZBA. You know, but it's, 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 you know, in terms of every sign going to the. Design review committee, and you can, if you want to send every sign to this design, you can be my guest. But. It's, it's the design review committee does not have that near charge, if it's just for a single sign.
So was it just a specific kind of sign, Amy, or were you thinking all signs, this, this?
No, it's not, it's specific, it's the freestanding, there's also wall signs. And residential signs, we didn't include any of those. The freestanding signs are. The ones that sit on the ground.
And what is your, what is the heart of the matter there, when you think of the freestanding signs that you think it's, you. I'm just trying to uncover what would make, what's the benefit upon the designer view in your mind? Is there something going on now that, with the freestanding signs that needs a better process, or? Anything specific in mind, or not a specific location, but just in general?
No, just, we're in the, doing the downtown revitalization, and I noticed in other towns. They really, they review the signs, like, and especially in the downtown business is what I found. Downtown business and historical, historic districts. Had very strict sign regulations and had design review or the planning board review those signs.
Okay, so we're looking, is this number nine? I can't see it anymore.
Can you scroll down to number nine?
Okay, it's right here too. Like, so. Number nine actually just is because of this, so this is the heart of it. And then nine just says freestanding signs. After review of the design review, so that's just added in because it's up here. So if I'm going to take it off up here, I'd have to, down there, I'd have to take it off up here too.
Okay, so it's about freestanding or electronic signs in.
And any sign in the downtown.
Sound in downtown business, okay, so it's focused on signs in downtown business, what they, the look of the signs in downtown business. What we want that look to be, and does it match with our design standards?
Excuse me, can I also note that the master plan implementation committee that Millie and Amy are on. Are focusing on specifically where is your downtown, what does it exist? Well, I mean, and so why would you go and make definitions about where your downtown is and signage? When you have your implementation committee working on it right now? I just feel like that's putting the cart before the horse, it doesn't make any sense. It doesn't seem like there's an, it doesn't seem like there's a problem that exists. And you already have a committee that's hired a consultant to review and look into that, so. I, I guess I'm concerned about, like, why wouldn't you wait, why are you doing this now? When you have a committee that's already looking into defining your downtown and what it's going to look like.
So, I don't know what that has to do with signs, though, this is the district we have right now, we're not redefining downtown business. We're just saying the signs in this district will have a, we want to clean up the look of it, not changing the parameters of downtown business.
Well, what I'm saying is the implementation committee is going to come back to the planning board with recommendations. So if you're going to have a specific look, that's going to come out of the implementation committee who has a broader base. About what they're discussing, what the downtown should look like. I mean, are there, I, I'm specifically asking about, for example, it seems like hyper-focused on downtown. Where you already have this large committee that's already working on downtown.
Well, I guess if they had certain standards that they're interested in, wouldn't that go to our designer view standards, and not necessarily. Where the review happens, but what happens in the review, so this is just saying where the review happens. Not, or maybe later on it defines differently, but I guess I'm not making the connection, but that's okay.
Okay, I, if you don't make the connection, I'm sorry about that, but what I'm talking about is with, I don't understand why. The board is looking to make major changes in hyper-focus as you read through this on downtown. When you have the implementation committee focusing on downtown, defining it and making recommendations, working with a consultant. That's all.
So I think the, the downtown will be the downtown, whatever they, wherever they lay that out. I think we're just trying to get a jumpstart on one small thing, I don't think this is overreaching. Every town around us has come to this conclusion, I'm suspecting that they will come to the same conclusion.
I disagree, I think this is excessive as far as overregulation. But anyway, I'll move on to my next, if I can have one more question.
Of course.
On Amy, so you put in twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, you added all those in, which are. Yeah, there you go, okay. All right, the LED rope, lighting, strip lighting, all of that, can you just explain the reason why on that?
Actually, Anthony started with twelve or thirteen and fourteen, and I hijacked and added the other stuff. So, I'll let him.
This seems to be both of your, your, um, bylaw, why don't you probably explain to me about that? So, here is some, here are some businesses that I'll just tell you that I think they're doing a nice job, that I think this would impact. So if you look at Purple Rose, they use a lot of the string lighting and the LED rope lighting in their windows. I'm assuming this would be prohibited moving forward with that. Um, is that correct, Bob? Am I correct in that?
Can you do whatever you want indoors?
That's a window display, I think.
That window display is different.
Window displays are one thing. But when you talk about, you know, LED rope lighting and other sort of decorations that aren't necessarily a sign. My question is. I noticed I was going by Rocky's Plaza, and all the, all the pole lights there have lights and holiday glitter on them. Is, is that part of it as well?
Well, yeah, it is, because this is what the other towns had, unless such lights are used part of a religious celebration and not connected. To commercial promotion.
Well, you, you can argue that, you know, garland is not a religious item.
I also wanted to bring up Romaine's Restaurant, which has white lights all outside along where their outdoor dining is. I'm assuming the way this is written, and that would all have to be taken down.
I think those also come under decor.
My intent with the LED and rope lighting is, and there's just a handful of businesses in town. That I notice, if you drive down Main Street. At night, there's a few that are, I mean, they're striking when you drive by them.
Well, what are they?
That was the intent of going after those rope, very bright LED lights. So maybe the definition needs to be better defined.
Can you share some of those businesses that bother you?
So specifically, there's the look of, so there's Sam's. There's the coffee shop downtowns. And then there's Metro West added them to their building as well.
So, is it?
I'm sorry, Metro West Painting, or Metro West what?
Painting.
Okay. So those three businesses bother you the most?
I don't think you're saying they bother.
First, first of all, come on now, that, why do you, you, I know what you're doing here, Michelle. No, businesses don't bother me.
Well, you guys wrote the bylaw, we're just trying to read it and ask our zoning enforcement officer how it would be impacted.
You're trying to create a narrative.
So, in this case.
You can't create a narrative in a zoning bylaw, the zoning bylaw has to be as black and white as you can. Narratives are full of gray, and they're full of stories, okay, and you've got to try to eliminate stories in the zoning bylaws.
So if we were to think of the heart of this one, and maybe we figure out, how can we get to the heart of what we're trying to do here without. Like, you know, a, a too big of a impact. It sounds like the point is to not have the excessive flashing, bright, things that are just not conducive. To the business, but more just kind of. Blasting light versus if, I don't think someone putting decorations on the deck or Christmas or holiday lights. Are necessarily part of what we're trying to say here. Is there a way that we could figure out how to. Make that distinction that makes sense, I'm trying to figure out, is there a way where we could delineate that if we need to? So, so far we put unless lights are used as part of religious celebration and not connected to commercial promotion. We know that the inside window dressing or whatever the case, that doesn't necessarily matter. Bob, does the deck lighting, is that something that, that would be impacted or not, so if you had deck decor, does that matter?
I don't have anything in the signed bylaw right now that would restrict it.
So deck decor or not, okay.
Because it does not call attention, it doesn't, it's not a commercial calling, it's a decoration, okay? The other thing is, you know, you talk about, you know, banners and things like that. You've got banners on flagpoles and on power poles all the time, you've got sponsoring companies under it. Those would be disallowed under the proposed changes, and all of the banners out at the Little League field. Behind the police station would have to come down as well, I'm sure the sponsors of the Little League people would love to hear that as well.
Okay.
Talk about number fifteen, the way number fifteen is written, as Bob indicated, all of those. Signs that go up around town, Apple Fest signs would not be allowed. As well as the Little League signs for commercial at the baseball fields would not be allowed.
That's right.
This wasn't, this was in almost every town that I read, that, because you don't want to. Too many signs is too much, like if you're attaching it to utility poles and rocks and fences and.
So how do you allow, is there a way to delineate, so. Is it, does it, oh, attached to is in there as well? So say like we wanted to do things like put up the hometown hero signs, how do we allow something like that? Like a special occasion type thing, where it's a set period of time for a special occasion.
That's a banner under temporary signs.
Oh.
And also.
Different.
But if there's, but if there's a commercial business attached to it, say this sign is sponsored by Cumberland Farms. Can't have it.
Hmm, what are you talking about, attached to a tree or a fence, like, the banners are different for hometown heroes or Apple Fest. These are things like, I did see a utility pole when I was driving around, and it said coldest beer in town. And it was in front, right near Broughtwood Street, like that has nothing to do with the utility pole. And like trees and fences, like, I saw trees down at one thirty-five where people stapled that they were dog walkers. And fences, like, you're allowed so many signs in town, like. If you pay money, should certain people be able to hang big banners on fences, I don't, I don't know. But maybe you can say for nonprofit, I might have read that somewhere too, there are so many different towns, but this is like. Something that is in a lot of towns, or else you have signs just plastered to everything.
Yeah, like we do now, yeah, they're all over the place.
So, I, another question is, is. So we already talked about the signs on the poles and. You know, the fences and stuff like that. I had, Amy, are you talking about when people put a yard seal sign or something like that on a telephone pole? Is that what you're talking about, when you, when you just said you see people put signs up that they're dog walkers, and you're talking about telephone poles where they put it up?
Well, it's a utility pole, so yeah, it would be a telephone pole.
Okay.
I mean, that's not allowed now anyways, I wouldn't think, or else anybody could attach things to utility poles all over town.
I also think CVS, just recently, are you also commenting about CVS banners? Out there on their poles, where they say that they're, you know, the hub station?
No, this is a utility pole, the CVS banners move in the wind, so they're probably not allowed, and that was before this bylaw update.
Okay, so then CVS would have to take their banners down as well.
Yeah, but that isn't something that I wrote, that's something that's in the bylaw right now.
Okay, well, I don't think they blow in the wind, they're, they're like adhered to, they're not. I wouldn't exaggerate like that and say they blow in the wind.
Well, I think they would, but also. If it's a banner, is that part of the temporaries, if you want to really get into the details? If it's a banner, is that part of the fifty-six day temporary banner, because they already have a freestanding sign and a wall sign? So if there are banners up and down Main Street, what is that considered if you're looking at the sign bylaw?
All banners are considered temporary fifty-six days.
Right, so the CVS banners are fifty-six days and they're promoting a sale or promotion?
Right, that's the intent of the banner and temporary sign bylaw.
Okay, yeah, do they come to you, Bob, and then that's when the clock starts?
It come, they come to me. And when I issue it, the clock starts then, and they say it's good for fifty-six days in a calendar year. And I don't please the fifty-six days, and we don't have the staff to, to look at fifty-six days. If I'm driving around and I'm seeing the same sign there, you know, from winter into spring, I'm going to give them a call and say, take it down. Okay, there is nobody on this planet that's going to go out and put a time clock on a fifty-six day banner.
Yep, and I'm not complaining, and I didn't bring it up, Michelle brought it up, I was just wondering. What the banners she was talking about were considered as, it's not any change that has to do with the bylaw we're talking about tonight.
Millie, did you have a question, it sounded like you had something, and then?
Um, it was more on the lights, I think, so we can, we can finish this up, and if we need to revisit some lights, I can comment or question on that.
Sure, okay, so anything else we want to look at in this one?
The only question I had, and, and I guess it's up, I sent a question to town council about no use variance. So we'll come back, and, and when he says if use variance is even allowed or not. But you see where these places where it says no use variance is allowed? Um, I, instead, this is what I added, I put it up here, so I don't have to, so it's not written a million times. I guess that's something from the board I wanted to get feedback on, if it's better there, or.
Well, maybe, I, I don't have any specific feedback, I'd be curious to see what council has to say, I don't know whether it's right or wrong. And it has no impact on dimensional variances anyway, obviously.
No.
Okay.
Okay, so should I stop sharing? Does anybody else have any questions?
I do, so let's go down to the next section, which is signs in residential districts. And Bob, could you speak to number three, please?
If somebody can stop scrolling, that would be great.
Which, we're at number three, you're talking about, oh, number three here, I thought you were going down further.
Well, somewhere in the strikeouts and the underlines and the paints and the blues. Um, is that number three, what is currently in the zoning bylaw for the signs?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Uh, no internally illuminated signs, is that new?
I think we talked about it last time.
Well, I don't remember last time. Internally has an underline, does that mean you're adding it?
Yeah, with the bylaws, everything underlined was added, and everything crossed out is being deleted.
So Amy, why don't you have externally illuminated?
Externally illuminated, there are some in, in allowed, this is no internally illuminated signs shall be permitted. But externally illuminated is.
Why aren't you putting in externally illuminated, why don't you include that in there?
Why do you want to, why do you want to prohibit it?
Well, you just want to say that it should be allowed in there.
Well, in residential district, no internally illuminated signs shall be permitted, that, that means externally illuminated is allowed. I don't think you have to call it out.
So Bob, if it's not in the bylaw, does not, not mean that it's an allowed? Or does it automatically? Or does it automatically say if it's not internally, it should therefore be externally?
Generally, if it's not in the bylaw, it's not allowed. Okay, so if you wanted to rewrite it, so you're not allowing internally illuminated signs. You could say in a residential district only.
Non internally eliminated signs?
No.
I think this made the most sense. Cause if, if you don't allow internally, but you leave out, we do have a definition for externally at the top. And you're just talking about internally.
If it says externally illuminated or allowed in the rest of this residential district, it should be in here. I mean, I get if you want to take out internally illuminated, that's fine, shall be permitted. When associated with a non residential use or lawfully preexisting nonconforming business use. Lighting the signs for non residential usage shall comply with subsection D five of this section. What is D five?
D five. Goes back to the calculation. And I don't know, I think it might have been left over from a previous bylaw, cause I can't find D five really. Let me go today, I'm not trying to make you sick. D five says signs containing electronic streaming messages are prohibited. So it didn't really make sense. These bylaws were updated in two thousand fourteen, I'm, I'm wondering if that was left over.
Go back to the residential one if you would, please.
Sure. Unless it's trying to say no streaming in residential. Everybody close their eyes. There we go.
So in residential district, you can have an internally lit agricultural sign. You can't have any signs, or you can't have an internally illuminated sign. Well, you're taking that out. So you're taking out a currently allowed use. For the sign and getting rid of it. So in a residential district, no internally illuminated sign shall be permitted except for agricultural sign. You can also go signs in the residential district are allowed to be either nonlit or lit externally.
If you want me to add that, I can.
Well, you're, you're writing it.
Yeah, but I thought that is a given, if you're not banning it, like if it's not banned, then it's allowed. Do you want me to add in that externally illuminated and nonlit signs are permitted? I think it's.
So what is, what is the heart? So in a residential, no internally illuminated sign shall be permitted. What, and what the external piece of it with a debate is whether or not to include it, specifically call up to say you can have externally lit?
Yeah, but it will end that we allow signs, but we already have. The signs are permitted, so I don't think we have to say that all app signs are permitted, because they're already up here that we do allow. One wall sign. Two square feet, temporary sign, six square feet.
So you can have externally lit signs in a residential district?
Yep.
Okay, and is that somewhere in here where it's clear that you can in another spot?
No, we have externally lit definition. Just like how we have electronic signs defined. And then it was written where they were allowed and where they weren't allowed. Like, we don't, they only wrote where it was allowed or where it was not allowed, but it wasn't included in every district. So I, I know a common thing, it's confusing, but in a residential district. If you want, if you think it makes sense to add that externally. Illuminated signs shall be permitted, then that's fine, if that makes it easier for people.
Well, I think it's just consistent with the idea, idea that if it's not permitted, it's prohibited. So if you say that it's allowed. Then it's not prohibited. Do you know what I'm saying? We, we do consistently use that, that. Thought process when we're trying to delineate whether something is or is not allowed and often fall back to if it's not. Permit, if it's not permitted, then it's prohibited, and that would. Certainly fall into that category if we said, well, externally lit signs aren't permit, you know, permitted here, it must be prohibited.
So how does that translate into what you think for number three, that we should, should add the externally lit?
I think we should permit it. Say that it is permitted.
So that it's clear?
Yeah.
And Amy, that still is within the heart of this whole point here.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
So it's the same thing.
Like I think when we go down to all the other districts, we don't talk about any illumination for, we don't say. That it's, they're allowed or they're not allowed, it's just not really talked about.
Right.
And they're all the rest of them. If, when you go down to downtown business district. It says you can have a freestanding sign, a wall sign or directory sign, but it doesn't talk about illumination at all. So I took that as. In the downtown bus district, you know, they're actually all allowed. Unless you had it up here further, which we did, you know, these are the. This is where they have the list of what's allowed and what's not allowed. And then at the bottom with these districts, it really had wall, freestanding and temporary signs in the sizes. But for, in this residential, it did call out. Lighting, so I guess it, it doesn't matter. It makes people understand it better.
Hmm, okay.
But when you go down further, it doesn't call it out again. In the other districts.
Well.
But it doesn't matter.
Consistently inconsistent.
Nothing else. Okay, other thoughts and questions on this? Alright, so what is the boards? We have a couple of questions outstanding, what are we thinking if you go back to the section where we debated a little bit of making sure, you know, what we want to do? With the ropes, the LED ropes and all of that, so the section here, so let's see. The heart of this, thinking, again, I guess maybe we don't have. Maybe we need to think about that a little more to get to the heart of this, because I think there's, there's something good here that we're trying to do with. Just making it so there's not these blazing lights all over the place, but we definitely don't wanna. Well, I can't say definitely, but it seems like we don't want to. Impact any business from, you know, just having, if they have their deck lights or whatever else.
Right.
Any thoughts on what we could do here to kind of solve our problem without oversolving it?
Is there a way to say for the lighting, like the decorative lighting, is there a way to say that that type of lighting? Without sign or advertising is. Acceptable? Cause I think the lighting with the advertising of the sign is what people are finding might be less pleasing. Versus just lighting without really an advertisement or a sign or a, a announcement. One with a message and one without a message are two different things.
How would you state it? We're gonna throw it back at you.
Yeah, I don't know.
What I do is I go steal it from other towns, so I just stole this from self bro. Because I knew the intent of what we were trying to do, so I said, okay, let's see what other towns say.
So if you said something like, uh, lighting without bearing advertising manner?
Where?
Effective, I don't know, cause it's, it's. It's written under, and this is under sign area, which is different, but they do delineate what part of the sign. A, a number twenty-eight, well, I'm looking at the zoning, not that one. They do delineate lighting versus the sign part, what is included and what is not. Let's see, I'm trying to figure out where you are in that. And maintenance of signs.
What page do you own, Millie?
Uh, well, I'm in the old zoning book, so it's on page seven, one hundred, under sign area. Where they differentiate the structural part of a sign or a message versus lit and lit, lit or decorative. And so I didn't know if there's a way to just. You know. Cause I don't think you really want to impact that.
Yeah. You're on page seven, one hundred?
Yeah, in the. It's old, two thousand nineteen, that's the most recent one I have.
Is it under A, B, C, D?
It's under sign area, under definitions.
It's still on seven, one hundred.
Yes or no?
I see it, yep.
Yeah, okay. Under sign areas, like the third sentence, so it says structural members not bearing advertising matter shall be, shall not be included. Unless they're, you know, internally lit or, or the structural areas are, that's talking about the area of a sign. But it's somewhat differentiating what part is the sign, what part is not the sign, and. Obviously remains string lighting above the patio is not part of a sign.
Right.
So that shouldn't be impacted. As our, you know, decorative lighting on, on poles and things that I, I think are nice.
Right, like you said.
I think that lighting not attached to an advertisement is really not impacted in this.
Right, the way it reads already.
Yeah. So I think that that does kind of differentiate what would or wouldn't be impacted. Does that make sense? Can you go back to that part about that you have written about what's on utility poles and postings and things like that and really?
It's right underneath it.
I think it is, I can hardly see it though, I don't have it on my. Cause I, I feel like that's.
Number fifteen?
Yeah. I mean, I think that if somebody puts up a yard sale sign, I don't, you know. I know we have them, I don't think you're gonna stop them, they're not really permitted, so they're not really supposed to do it.
What if we specified commercial signs? Is it really about like putting up a sign that says cold beer or whatever you saw earlier?
It said coldest beer in town. I know, I only happened to be driving by because I know I've read this a million times, so I said, let me drive around town and see. You know, because I pulled this from another town because they all have it, and I'm like, let me drive around and see what's on our polls. There actually was something that said coldest beer in town.
I want to know where that was, actually.
That's way worth finding.
It's up near Bartlett Street.
Um, okay, so do we, is it a distinction for commercial signs? Or no, that's still wouldn't, that's still not really what we're getting at here.
Right, cause still, um. You know, and I, I can probably find it, and I, I hate to go back to all the bylaws I looked at, but. I think what they were talking about, like the signs on the fences at the. At the baseball field, I wonder how you can.
Signs on municipal property?
Yeah. And that might even be.
It would definitely not be allowed.
Cause it's different, it's different, like.
I mean, does this, the other question I have, does this include people who are holding signs for events or things like that, or?
No, cause I saw that somewhere, it doesn't count if you're holding them.
Okay.
You can say are prohibited except. On municipal property with, if they allow it, like, does, do people have to go to the selectmen to say? Can I hang? Amy Prodsky dog walking on the fence at Casey Field, like who approves those?
The selectmen have nothing to do with it.
Michelle, who approves all those banners that hang on, at Casey Field?
No one approves them.
So I can go down and hang a sign there?
I mean, when you talk about what Millie just brought up, if you go back to your very first page, when you're. When you define a banner sign, it says, and you talk about on, you know, basically talks about municipality jurisdictions. It just says it's not allowed when the purpose is of commercial promotion. You're also talking about any of the stuff that they do on the one thirty-five soccer fields, where they promote businesses down there.
I mean, I mean, how reasonable do you want to be? I've always left it go, you know, if it's for worthy cause. You know, I mean, the people collecting the money from those sponsorships at the ball field is the Little League.
Right.
It's a community event, so, you know, I've turned a very blind eye over the years to what I consider to be. You know, worthy townwide benefited of the goodwill of the community events.
Are nonprofits excluded?
I've allowed, I'm sorry, what's that?
Are nonprofits excluded explicitly somewhere? I'm trying to remember.
It doesn't talk about nonprofits, I'm just looking at for the better, for the better good of the town. You know?
I was just wondering, I thought I remembered something in the bylaws, I, there must be mistaken.
There, there is a line in there, it's very vague, it, it's, it's, a lot of it's open for interpretation. And I think I've done a fairly fair job about saying, okay, you put the banners up at the, at the, at the ball field, they're, they're maintained, they're tight. They're up there for more than fifty-six days, you know, I don't ask for a permit. Go ahead and put them up, as long as you're kept safe and, you know, the money is going someplace good, you know, you, you want to restrict that now?
No, I'm not asking to restrict that, I just want to talk about it.
That's, that's why you have to be very careful when you write these bylaws, because the way they're written now, all that goes away.
What, we can say except for municipal properties.
And that would include all the fields?
Yeah.
Okay.
But what about, what about everything all the way up and down Main Street?
I don't think people should be attaching things to poles up and down Main Street, that's like a huge complaint.
I'm talking about Apple Fest.
So Apple Fest and the Veterans Weekend and all the other things that get hung?
No, that's a temporary banner that's not attached to a fence.
No, it's, it's attached to a utility pole.
No, they're not, those.
Take a ride around town, Amy.
I was picturing the one at the Town Common.
No, the Town Common has. When it was built. It was engineered to have a spot where a banner sign could be installed. Okay, it's an appropriate size, and it goes in an appropriate place, the DPW installs it. Okay, if anybody else puts a banner up on the fencing that's up there. No go.
Right?
Okay, that, that, the town, the new Town Common was designed with that, with a sign in mind.
It actually wasn't, that came up afterwards, but I, I won't get into that.
That issue has been settled.
Yep, so I'm not talking about that though, I'm just trying to talk about this one right now. The signs painted or attached to utility poles, we can say except for. You know, town approved events. Because that means if signs painted are attached to utility poles is okay, then, then I can advertise my business on a utility poles up and down Main Street.
You, 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 you're missing one of the points here, you cannot. Paint. Directly on a side of a building or on a pole. It, any, every sign has to be on some sort of a removable surface. Unless it's etched into the side of the building for a historical date, or if it's like the Mason's Hall, they put their square encompasses in the cornerstone. Okay, all other signs have to be on a removable material.
Okay, so signs painted, you want me to take off, is that what you're saying? So it would be signs attached to?
I'm just telling you what's currently in the code, you know, you can write whatever you want.
Okay, so it sounds like. Okay, so it sounds like we have maybe some, just thinking about the language we have here. It was, one thing I'm just confused on is that when we look at the signs versus banners, what, when you say something's a banner versus a sign, how do we know which category it falls into? Like, Apple Fest signs, are those banners to you, Bob, or signs to you when you look at the bylaws?
It's very simple, a banner is anything on a flexible surface.
Okay. Got it.
I mean, don't overthink it, it's, it's a flexible surface.
I know.
You know, congratulations, Mary Ann, you graduated college on the front lawn of the, of the house. Okay, those are banners, okay, a sign is a permanently attached, you know, something that goes on the facade.
Got it, okay, all right, so we may need some language cleanup here to think about. So this area seems specific, are there other questions? Millie, did you have something else? I know you had a couple of different questions.
Um, no, that, it mainly the lighting being decorative versus being a part of the sign. Was there anything in, in your bylaw, Amy, about the window signs that are?
Yes, I just want to finish this right here.
Okay.
And then I'll go to that, but I'm not married to this, so if this is something that gives everybody heartburn, you know, we get a lot of complaints about signs on utility poles, but I'm sure someone can tell them to pull them down. I'm not married to this.
I've never heard a complaint.
I have, but I don't, it hasn't been, it was like a year ago, was that?
Well, why, why haven't, if there's a complaint, why hasn't it come to me? Because I'm the enforcement officer, I'm glad to take the complaint.
Sure, I think one did once, like, these were the dog walkers that were hanging them up at one thirty-five. It went to someone, and they came down, but, and it wasn't me, I didn't even complain, so. But this is in a lot of towns, which is why I put it there, but I can take it out because I'm not married to it, it doesn't, if it gives people heartburn, I'd rather just take it out.
All right, well, let's take a temperature check from board members to see what people are feeling about this particular section. So for a number fifteen, does this, do you have, if you have concerns, or just let me know, concerns or no concerns, Millie?
I, I would just assume not have that in, I think it's a bit just overly descriptive and maybe not going to have a huge impact at this time.
Okay, Michelle?
As I stated before, it's too much overregulation.
Okay, Anthony? Oh, did we lose Anthony?
You're muted.
I, I think it could come out.
Yeah, it doesn't, I'm not married to it, I just, every single town I saw had it, so I've added it, but it doesn't matter.
Okay, temperature check on fourteen, are we concerned with this one or no concerns? Millie?
Uh, that's the rope lighting. I certainly don't think I care for it in downtown. Plus the lights are used as part of a religious. But I'm okay with that, the way it's written.
Okay, Michelle, you had a concern with this one, as brought up before.
Overregulation.
Okay, Anthony?
I, if anything, I think the, if we have to further define exactly what it is, I mean, it's, we could probably look for better language to do that. I still would like to, to pursue this, but I don't want to inhibit businesses from doing decorative things or lighting or anything like that.
Okay. Let's see, did we have thirteen, was that, did we talk, were there any issues with thirteen? I don't remember, I don't think so. Okay, do we want to, any other areas where we want to do, Amy, could you scroll for a second? Were there any other areas that we were discussing that we want to do a quick check?
Um, design review, that was the big, another.
Okay, design review, temperature check on the design review piece, Millie?
Um, required for. I think on that one, is that specifically for freestanding or electronic only, so not for all signs?
Right.
And, and for changes? Is that also for any changes in signs?
It would be for any freestanding electronics message center or sign in the downtown business. Yeah, even if it changed, because there's no way. I mean, I could add in for any new, but I mean, say a business changes, it could go from, you know, something minor to something major. I don't know.
I'm, I'm a little hesitant on that.
Anything specific that stands out to you?
Just how many times it, something might have to go before the design review if they're changing it, and just seems like a lot, and that could be a law for a, a business.
Okay. Michelle, temperature on this one?
No.
Anthony?
I just, I'm not, other than, yeah, you're, you're putting a business through an extra hoop that maybe you don't need to. I don't, I'm not married to this.
So is there, is it something where we want just new signs is the issue if there's a change, or just, is it something where we could specify, I'm just reading this again? Should, would it make the board feel more comfortable to put new? Does a new sign matter, or it doesn't matter to the board?
I mean, I guess for me, they used to come through design review anyways, when it was a new, when a new company, I guess they would have to be changing other things, but when they came in front of design review, they used to, I feel like that's okay for a new sign?
Okay. Michelle, how do you feel about new signs?
So are, Amy already changed that any change to the by, any change to a sign, altered or anything constitutes a new sign, so that goes back to what Millie was saying before. It seems excessive, and you're creating a hardship to businesses.
What number are you talking about, Michelle?
When you said what creates a new sign, it's anytime you change a sign.
We already took that out. You, you wanted me to take out altered, and I already did that, so we're back to the original definition.
Well, I still don't believe it should go before design review, I mean, it goes before design review if you're doing a site plan review, and that's the way it's always been.
Okay, so Michelle is not in favor regardless of sign distinction, Anthony?
I, I feel the same, I'm, I'm sort of indifferent to it. I'd probably weigh on the side of not having it.
Okay, so let's see, whether or not there's a distinction in here, this, this isn't two spots, so what's the others, if you go down for a second, Amy, what's the other?
Oh, that was just for freestanding, so if you don't include freestanding, this would go away. Instruction or action involve freestanding signs, so be subject to the approval of the building inspector after review by the design review committee. So if up here, you're not including freestanding any more, then that would come out.
Okay.
I do feel that electronic message centers, although we don't get a lot in downtown business signs, should go in front of design review, especially if we're gonna do a downtown revitalization, because I just think it's going to be important, and also electronic message centers usually end up big and they have a lot of different items to them, like, there's a lot of coloring, and there's a lot of, I don't know, I know in the other town, Shoesbury, who's doing there, they did a downtown, a new downtown bylaw to redo their downtown, and electronic message centers and any sign in the downtown had to come in front of the planning board. I mean, we could change it to planning board, I just put design review in there, but.
Well, I, I don't disagree if you just want to restrict it to the downtown and the new signs and electronic messaging, I just think that when you say any sign, it, it's very broad.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well.
Hey, Carrie?
Yes?
Uh, just chime in, I actually am still awake here, I promise. The design review committee, as I understand it, is advisory to the special permit granting authority, just like the groundwater advisory committee is.
Yeah.
So they don't advise the building inspector for sign permits, they only advise the board granting a special permit or a site plan approval, and so I don't know that you have a mechanism to send them to the design review committee for just a sign. It's usually, from my understanding, in the past, it went, uh, design review might weigh in on a sign if it was part of a site plan approval or a special permit application, and I think that's what Bob was trying to get at before, as well as maybe Michelle. So I don't know that you can do that, that you can send them there for just a sign. And sometimes when somebody's bringing a site plan forward, they don't know what their sign criteria is going to look like, but they could just apply for a sign permit, like a building permit later on, right through the building inspector, so this seems to be making it a lot more complicated than perhaps it, it is allowed to be.
Okay, so that is an interesting point, Ben. Amy, does that jive with?
I can't, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, my computer's dying, so I didn't hear anything you said, like, all I have is a blank screen.
Can you hear us now?
I can hear you, but I can't see anything on my screen, so I'm gonna have to restart my computer, I think.
Okay.
I don't know what happened, like, or my screen just died and I have no computer.
Okay.
I don't have any, I don't have any visual.
All right, so, but before you shut down and come back, just so we don't lose the thought.
Sure.
Fred's point was, if it's going to the building inspector for a sign permit from the building inspector, it's not, there's no mechanism in place for a design review to be involved in the process, because they'd be there on the site plan side or special permit side, but not in the case where somebody goes straight to the building inspector for the sign. So how does that, and how does that jive with what you had in mind for the process? Was it a part of the site plan process that you had in mind, or?
Um, well, I mean, the way Shoesbury had it, they just had on the list, said that any sign for the downtown needs to go to the, has to go in front of the planning board, like, there was no, I guess it was just known that if a sign comes in the downtown that, you know, the building inspector would say, well, you have to go in front of the planning board for this, or I don't know how they do it, I'd have to look into it.
Okay, so maybe it's in the wrong spot.
Yeah, my computer screen just came up again, that's so weird.
Okay, oh, no, you're not in the wrong spot, I meant, maybe that line is in the wrong spot, so if the intent is to just make sure design review has the ability to review signs, it's in the section that talks about the building inspector review, so the question seems to be, how would we force this mechanism to happen in a building inspector permit environment? Maybe we ask, maybe we, we add that to our town council question.
Yeah, like, when I read it in Shoesbury, it was just under their basic requirements, I think it just said all downtown signs must be approved by the planning board.
Okay, so why don't we follow up on that one to find out, just based on the whole question about mechanism, I don't think we're looking to create extra steps for people, it's just a matter of
Right.
that review, so I'm gonna add that down for a question. Okay. Any other sections that we discussed that we need to go back to?
And if we want to, I mean, I'm not, if everybody, if it gives everybody heartburn too, you know, that's something I could bring up with the, um, the master plan when we talk about the downtown, you'd say, you know, should it go through a design review, because that's what the other towns are doing when they're trying to really focus on the downtown. So, I mean, if you want to, you know, just because we're at the end of, of, you know, end of the year here, we have to get to town meeting, I, I don't mind taking this out and then bringing that up when we go through the downtown process. You know?
Yeah, no, I, it, it's fine, it's fine either way, I just want to, if there's a spot where it could belong, does, does the board want, in general, regardless of where it is here, does the board want the design review committee to review electronic message center signs in downtown business? In some form or fashion? So Amy, it sounded like you wanted that.
I did, especially, I mean, freestanding not as much, I do think they're so big that it probably should go through designer view, but definitely electronic message centers.
Okay, so just for freestanding aside, just electronic message center in downtown business, do we, do we want design review to have the ability to look at that? Um, Millie, your, new signs, that is, Millie, what's your thought on that?
I, I would agree with that.
Anthony, what's your thought on that? Oops, I can't hear you.
Are they not prohibited downtown already?
Right, but it would be electronic message signs anywhere.
Oh, I see, so it'd be in any district, and then any sign in downtown business?
Yes.
Okay.
But again, if it's gonna hold everything up, I would, I can wait.
So then the question is really, do we want design review committee to review any sign in downtown business is the question?
I do think to Fred's point, though, that it just isn't a real mechanism for this to go, I mean, if you wanted to do something, I mean, if you really were concerned about this, you, I think you'd have to point it to the planning board, and then, you know, but have to go to design review and then through the SBGA, if that was the thing, I mean, I think that might be a little overreaching.
Okay.
Why don't I take it out and we can look into it further, and if we decide it's something that's needed, we'll come back to it next year. What do you think?
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna do it right now, so, and then I can send everybody the updated. I think still for a site plan, it would still go in front of the design review anyways, like.
True. Okay, so we have, and we still have the public hearing process to get feedback as well, so overall, it seems like we removed some pieces that caused, just caused us to evaluate a little further. We have a couple of questions out to town council, does this seem like, at least at this point, pending, maybe what's turns out to be tweaking along the way, is this in a good spot to move forward at this point? Any other outstanding items?
I think so, and I think with the board going through it and having these discussions, I feel like that's what usually happens, you know, I don't feel like what we did today was anything out of the ordinary. When we went through this signed by law before, there was a lot of discussion, so I feel like it's a normal part of the routine.
Yeah, I think it's helpful to go through, definitely. Um, okay, so at this point, then, is there a motion to move the bylaw as of one twenty-nine forward pending town council and public hearing?
I make a motion to move the signed by law forward, the one twenty-nine signed by law forward.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Nay.
Nay, Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, so, good discussion, everybody. All right, next we have, let's see. I think it is the moratorium and use variance, I just have to pull that up. Let's see. Sorry, guys, I just. Uh, sorry guys, I just, um, uploaded email today, so I'm still sorting through, it's a weird format that I'm not used to. Let's see.
If I disappear, I'm gonna reboot, I don't know why, for like five minutes, my screen went blank, but I could hear you. I couldn't hear Fred, though, during that one section. So it's almost like I had a virus take over, crazy.
Okay.
It was out of my control.
Thanks for your patience. Okay, now I just want to, I'm gonna actually download it, so I can try to make it a little bigger for everybody to. All right, I ended up doing, the last time we talked about the moratorium by law, whoops, I'm not sharing yet, hold on a second. Okay, can everybody see this? Moratorium?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so the last time we talked about this, we, as we've been talking throughout the last few months or so, we've been trying to identify, what is the right path for us? Do we need to change our def, update our definitions to be more modern? Or do we need to take time for moratorium? So a couple of the takeaways were first, what would we be doing if we had a moratorium, what does that look like? And then the second piece was, if we were to update the definitions, what would those definitions look like? And where would we allocate them throughout the use table? So in the last version I sent, I don't think I put a date up top, but we'll say, um, 1:30 as the date, I think that's the day I submitted them to the board. So in this first path, we have the moratorium, which in this case, what I did was I added the things that we would be doing. So what I did, and I sent everybody the backup research as well, so we had a couple of different pieces we looked at. The MAPC report, and that was pretty lengthy, it was about 70 pages or so. So I found a summary document that I sent to the board, so I didn't expect you to have to read a 70-page report. And I thought it, the summary report laid it out pretty nicely in terms of what are the components that you should really be looking at. In fact, I think the article, the, the title was something like, what to do when e-commerce comes to your town? So I think it was a, a nice way to summarize some of the things that we could be doing as part of a moratorium, should we take that route? So these are the things that I scoped out as part of that. One that I thought was really interesting, I'm not sure if we mentioned it before, was requiring delivery vehicles registered in the same municipality to capture excise tax, which is, um, certainly would have made quite a difference over at the Amazon facility, in retrospect. So that was the first part, and then we can go back to it, I'm gonna jump down to the definitions to just point out some changes here. So the second piece that we thought was, if we don't go with the moratorium, what can we do to fortify our bylaws to protect the town? Uh, and just make sure that we're more in line with the way that e-commerce has transformed over the last few years? How can we get our bylaws to catch up with the market? So, um, Amy had shared through our participation in the panel that she participated in with CMRPC, um, some definitions that one of the presenters came to the table with, that was really in line with a lot of the reports I was looking at, even in terms of, if you were to take an Amazon, how they break down their different centers. So these definitions I added, and I also included what would be considered that last mile, the last mile type facility, which, um, seemed to be called a delivery station. So I kept that terminology to be consistent with, um, what the industry viewed as the last mile, um, facility. Now this part, I, I wasn't sure which path to take, so I'd be curious to get the board's feedback on this because I thought it's helpful to segment it out in this way so that we could make different decisions based on the type of facility. But in a couple of these cases, based on what we've seen over the last few years, I had no's in all of the districts. And I wondered if, you know, in that case, do they belong in a prohibited use table? I'm sorry, the prohibited use definitions we did last year? Or does it make sense to keep them here so they could be modified over time? Um, so that's something I'd be curious about everyone's feedback. And then otherwise, um, I think those are the primary changes, and with that, it'll open up for board discussion.
Can you go back to that table?
Can you see it okay?
I got it right here, okay.
So currently, we just have the two, so really the adding the three broke down further, the types of facilities, but then we ran into this of having, um, what I proposed to be no's for the time being.
Carrie, can I ask you why you, um, removed Business South under warehouse? Why did you say no to that?
Um, that's a good question. I was thinking for that one, if we wanted us to, if, if this was the alternate to a moratorium, did we wanna stay within the confines of what the planning board was able to take a look at in the, in the industrial districts? And then maybe think about the impact on any other districts? I'm open to whether or not that makes sense, um, in the Business South district. Um, my thought process is just to kind of minimize impact overall.
So the Business South, when you look on the map, is right on the highway, that does not make sense removing it? Seems like a natural fit over there when you look at it, so I would not understand why you would do that.
All right, so that's definitely something I'm gonna think about.
I have a question, um, with regards to your moratorium definition.
All right, hold on, let me scroll up.
Go back to C.
Right here?
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, why would you put building permit in there? Since you already have applicants that just got permitted and approved?
I think I did that when I was working on the moratoriums, that was what all our other moratoriums have. So if there's an empty warehouse, right now, there can't be a building permit issued if there's, you know, for someone who comes in and wants to do it by right. It's not for anyone that's already been approved, this would be for anything going forward. But this is every single moratorium we had in the past. It was the language was cut and paste from it.
Okay, so let's just talk about this one, not the other ones which are distinctly different. So Bob, my understanding about Lyman Street, that's been approved and went through that whole special permitting process, I mean, uh, they still have a ways to go, but, um, they would then ask for their building permit to be issued when they wanted to be cons, consider construction. If they wanted to do that between now and, uh, May 2022 and May 2023, does this not allow them to do that?
Um, because that has already, that process has already begun, I have to follow based upon what was approved at the time. Okay, so I have to stay with that. Um, in terms of the temporary moratorium, and this is notwithstanding, and it talks about a building permit, excuse me, way back in the beginning of the book, it talks about, um, this exact line, it says, no building permit shall be issued if a, um, variance or special permit that is required has not been issued. It's, it's, it's already in chapter one, and it's way up the beginning, it's like on, on page two, for, for real. It talks about no building permit, um, shall be issued, um, if, unless a, uh, uh, special permit or variance has been granted by, by special permit granting authority.
Okay, so let me ask you something, if we do a special permit, because sometimes we get the warehouses and we don't know who the tenant is, is that when they come, do they declare the tenant as part of the building permit process? Or when does that? When does that happen? Because some, sometimes we don't know, so.
Uh, in the past, because the buildings were built on spec, and the planning board allowed them to be built on spec. You know, and with those, with the decisions set back in that time, you know, things weren't as defined as narrowly as they're supposedly going to be. Uh, or actually from last year's town meeting, when some of the other, um, special permit restrictions came into play. So, you know, based upon what happened back then, it's a different situation than now. I would think now that, you know, if an applicant were to come to the planning board for a special permit for a warehouse, and if they don't have, um, a, uh, a tenant in mind, or is more specific use than just a giant big box, I think it would be up to the planning board to, um, kind of, you know, reach out and say, you know, we wanna know the exact use. You know, in, 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 in determining exactly what's going on, is it a middle mile, is it a last mile? You know, are they, are they manufacturing cotton swabs, or are they, you know, or are they gonna, you know, refining oil? Who, who knows? So it's, you know, things have tightened up since those buildings were, um, constructed and the tenants allowed to go in. And, 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 you know, it, you go by what was in the decision. You know, like I said, last year at the town meeting, some more, um, restrictions came in in terms of, um, uh, more special permits from the planning board required. And, you know, I think, you know, maybe defining what these types of, whether it's trucking, whether it's warehousing, whether it's last mile or mid-mile, whatever, that may be an opportunity for you guys to, you know, you know, be a little more cautious about who's coming in.
Mm-hmm, right. So then to make sure, um, I think the question I heard Michelle ask, it sounded like was, if someone got a special permit today, they don't, and this passes a town meeting, they don't have to wait till May 1st, 2023, they're already grandfathered into today's process.
My, yeah, my, my interpretation is that if, if a, if special permits and variances have been granted, and you know, they, 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 they are living under the rules set up back then.
Yep, okay.
Okay, um, again, anything that happens at, um, a town meeting, okay, in terms of further restricting anything, uh, anything already in existence is considered to be pre-existing, and they enjoy some sort of, um, a, a, I'm gonna say it, but I don't like it, grandfathering.
Oh, that's right.
And, and a lot of times, if you look at the state documents, it talks not so much about when the special permits were granted, but when they were applied for. Okay, um, I know, I know that comes up, uh, quite often in the building code, I know it comes up in 48. It talks about not so much the time when a special permit or variance was granted, but when it was applied for.
Mm-hmm, got it, okay. So maybe it's worth asking as well, that's good, that's good clarification, thank you. And then maybe it's good asking, council, just clarification on, on, do we say special permit or building permit? Is, is, do we just keep it to special permit? I'd just be curious to see how he views that. It's a good point. Any thoughts on which path makes sense for Northborough? Looking at the things that are as part of what could be a moratorium, the things that, you know, could be up for consideration as part of the scope? Any thoughts from board members on which path is the right way, based on where we are? What, maybe you've heard or read or anything like that?
So it, it seems to me that the definitions change might be the least, um, interruptive path, if that's the right word? Um, but will it, would, would it give us what we're looking for, which is, I think, uh, a better way to manage some of the issues that we're seeing? Is there a reason why we wouldn't be able to have both options?
Well, Amy, you had the idea we could put them both out there, and then if the more, if the town voters felt like they not support moratorium, we, it would not pass, and then we'd have the definitions.
Yes.
To fall back on, on the flip side, if the moratorium passes, we could pass over the definitions. So I guess it would get us to pass that the town, the voters could actually pick which path they want, which that could, I mean, that's why we're here.
Right.
Yep, that's where I think we should do it.
I would actually recommend on the, the path that Millie is suggesting, is that you add to that that a subcommittee that you, um, and I did wanna talk to this about the subcommittee, that you wanted to create to address some of the issues, probably go along on the same line as Millie was suggesting with the definitions, because then that subcommittee could start to address some of the issues without the moratorium, which would then give you some tools to use, should some applicant come before you. My concern about the demographics of this committee is how narrowly focused it is with regards to when you look at your list. So when you look at your list from A to I, you have 1, 2, 3, 4 that are specifically related to traffic, and I'm not quite sure, anyone on the planning board, or maybe even in the general public, whoever you decide to put on, is, um, you know, experienced in that area. So my suggestion would be for the board to consider, is to either having someone from the police department or the department, Department of Public Works, who is skilled in that area, they understand traffic, right? They understand the use of roads. None of us on this committee are even skilled in that area, even understand that to the level that they do. So my suggestion is to add someone from, um, the police department, I think would be a good person, maybe they would say, well, we don't really have someone on there, maybe the DPW is a good person. The other person I would highly recommend, even though that you don't have one right now, is your town planner. That's the person who's skilled in this. And I would also recommend on letter I, which is, how does this affect financially the town? Right, the impacts of when you, um, put a moratorium, or in this case, you don't put a moratorium, how can you capture more on the taxation purposes, someone from financial planning or the assistant town manager? And then I was on the fence about having a ZDA member on there. But I certainly think that committee, when talking about, um, and reviewing this, rather than going back and asking, staff, what do you think about this, or what should we do about this? That it's almost important to make it like the implementation committee, where it's a collaborative effort, where you have some staff already in the town that's experienced and knowledge on this, working alongside of, um, planning boards and then what, you know, residents within the community.
Um, okay, and so clarification, are you saying, if there were to be this committee, you think also adding the committee as part of the definitions path? Or you're still saying, if, if it were to exist as part of the moratorium, re, redefining the mix of members?
I would say add it to the definitions path as well, because what you're saying to the members of the community, you know, we've already defined it, but we have this committee that's going off and working right now to help us develop our toolkit.
Okay, and Amy, I see you have something too, and then I wanna share, um, questions that went to town council for this one. Um, Amy, do you have something?
Yeah, I guess, thinking about the composition of the committee, always having staff involved, DPW, fire, police was always on there, but I didn't know you could add it, you know, and like, since there's staff, I thought once the committee was approved, then they would have the appropriate staff members. I didn't know if you could send something to town meeting and say, we want this staff member, this staff member, this staff member. I assumed that the town planner would be involved as it's the planning board, and that he or she would also bring in the appropriate staff. Like, I didn't know, and maybe that's to ask town council, like, too, like, if you could even add the staff members without approval, you know?
Okay, so one question, just to clarify the questions that went here, about can the planning board actually create a committee as stated in the moratorium wording? So as a follow-up to that, or could it be a subcommittee of the planning board? Um, and then I guess as a follow-up to that would be, can the planning board dictate staff members on the committee?
Just like the master plan didn't, implementation committee didn't dictate the staff, it just laid out the committee members, and then the staff. And then the staff, you know, decided who was gonna be the staff liaison.
And the other question that went to town council was, um, could we cre- if we created a moratorium. Did, could we include both distribution and transportation under one umbrella? Or because there are technically two different uses, did, would, did there have to be two moratoriums? One for warehouse, one for trucking. So that was just a sort of a logistics thing. So that's what went there. Okay, I'm gonna pull up the bylaw again. I just wanted to share that with everybody. So hold on one second, I'm gonna share again. Alright, here we go. So I wrote down those, um, that type of mix for the committee, and then the suggestion is to could it go under definitions? So in that case. I guess it would be its own article in a way, because. We'd be adding a, I I guess the answer from town council will really help dictate that, because if we can create a committee like that. That could stand on its own. Right?
Right, but I'm guessing you can't, like, I don't, I could be wrong. I don't know if the planning board could ask to create a committee. At town meeting, because the selectmen create committees. The planning board could probably write a letter to the selectman and say, you know, this is really important. To the town, and we'd like to have you create a committee made up of these people. But I don't know if it's something that we would propose at town meeting to ask them to create a committee.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a good point. I think we do need town council, because with this may, I don't know if it's different. If you propose a committee as part of your moratorium. What would come out of the moratorium? Does that make a difference than if you just went straight with a article that said, we're making a committee? Okay, so that's, I wrote that down as well. It's an interesting idea to do that.
I think when it's part of the moratorium, it's kinda like, okay, we're doing this, this, and this, and it shows the path of what we were trying to do.
Right, so that, I think so that people have an understanding of why it's being done, what we plan to accomplish. It's not just a. Pause for a year with no action. Other thoughts or questions?
So I I have a question just in general about. Developments and in particular industrial ones, and. I noticed that in our, like residential, when we do subdivisions in a residential format. If I'm, if I understand correctly, it's because it's difficult to release, let's say fifty or sixty houses a year with occupants into our. Municipal structure, our schools and our roads and our towns. And I'm just wondering if that could somehow also then apply to something like. Warehousing or, you know, square feet of space released per year, because I think the issue is. One of the issues that we're we're trying to manage is how much came on so quickly. You know, the amount of warehousing and distribution that came on really quickly is. I think why we're struggling with some of this, rather than having it had been released over in phases.
So what would that look like? How i- is that something?
Well, I guess, I think in subdivisions and larger projects like that, they, there, there are. There's data that supports how many students we can incorporate over the year in our schools. And how much we can, how much the infrastructure can take, is there a way to get that data? From this type of transportation and industrial development? I don't know.
I wonder if that would almost be a part of special permit criteria versus in this particular, how would we put that into this?
I think so, and I think that would come out of the committee in the moratorium, and I do think. Consultants will have to be, you know, I think it's not just gonna be a planning board member, a selectman, I think. There's also, like, before Kathy left, she said there was money for consultants for the planning board every year. There may have to be a consultant pulled in, like, but I do know when Sutton. Wrote, they had their Amazon come in, there were thirty six conditions. And it was like, one of them was, when a third of the building is full, they have to come back. And do a traffic analysis, and I don't have it pulled up in front of me, but it's kind of what Millie was talking to. It was like a condition where, when a third of the building was full, we have to do this, this, and this, and see. What the impact was, and then when the next third is full, so it kind of like was breaking it down, but that was just for one building.
Right, but some of these buildings can be, you know, as we've seen, eight hundred thousand square feet, so. Is there a square footage, like a phase one, a phase two, a phase three, as there, as there are in developments or subdivisions, I should say?
Yeah. So that's interesting, because maybe that, so that comes into those e-commerce zoning best practices that we just don't. Have, that are not represented throughout the bylaws necessarily, with that in mind, so we don't have that lens. When we look at, you know, what we're evaluating via our bylaws, not necessarily as we sit here as. Board members, but that's actually stated out as as articulately as you just had said it, Millie.
Yeah, I think there are industrial development consultants, so I don't know if that's something that is. Worth looking into or adding into our, I I don't think it would hurt, but. I just think that the biggest, one of the biggest things that the town is is concerned about right now is. The onset, the speed of which the impact came.
Right. Right. Um, you know, it was. There were so many different things, in reading all of these reports and what what other towns are facing and what they're doing. It's clear that we're not set up to handle it. Um, I don't know if town voters, how they feel about a moratorium, if that's something, you know, I know there are two sides of this argument, and there's the worry of. Any sort of revenue or things like that, or if we're, you know, any sort of stalling to develop in development. But there are so many things that we aren't protected on, especially if you start to read these research reports that we just don't have. It's a huge gap for us, and. I almost wonder if we give the town the chance to look at these options and think for themselves, like what. What makes sense to me as a resident in this town? Do I feel that it's big enough that we need a moratorium, or do I feel, you know, we do these definitions and? It could be good to go with both and let let the town decide what they, which one that they think is best. I'm just curious in general for board members, is there, do do any members feel strongly one way or the other? I think Michelle leaned definitions with maybe adding a committee. Anthony, any preference on your part?
I I wholeheartedly believe um we should go with both options. Lead with the moratorium, let the voters decide. And then if they choose, if they chose a path that that's not the path they wanna go down, then we can tighten up the definitions. And it works the best, I think, for everybody.
Millie, any preferences from you?
I I I do agree with that, I think. It's important to hear what some of the residents have to say, and as, you know, hopefully they have a. Will be able to make a pretty clear understanding of what they're. What they're choosing. Um, and the impact, both negative and positive, and not, so that they can decide with being informed.
Okay, Amy, preference from you?
Oh, I think that's a good route to go.
Michelle, is your preference to just go with one, or do you think it makes sense to let voters kind of see both options and? Oops, I can't hear.
I'm in agreement to go with both.
Okay, so it sounds like, any other questions or comments? So back to, we had two, we had a couple of things, so. Back to this question Michelle brought up, Business South. How does the board feel about, does this need to change, or? Anything else of this use table in general from board members?
I, I think it could stay in there. As um. By approval or BA.
I guess definitely would have to be a special permit, which it was, just because. Business South goes all the way like down to Otis, Otis Street down near the coffee shop. And that little, that would be, you know, I don't know if there's any room over there, but in Lawrence Street too. So.
That's what I wondered, if there was even the ability to hold, is there any area where that could be? Maybe not, I mean.
Probably Lawrence Street. I think there are some properties on Lawrence Street. I don't know if they could hold warehouse with distribution. Maybe Fred or Bob, no, but you definitely wouldn't want the trucks coming towards Reno's Coffee and trying to make that turn. If they were trying to cut through town, they would definitely have to go off onto Route nine. The Bob or Fred, do you guys know if there's any warehouse with distribution down in Business South, near Lawrence Street, Otis Street? Off the top of your head?
There's already one um distribution center, it's a wholesaler for building goods, I believe. It's on Lawrence Street. There's a couple of other smaller businesses further up Lawrence Street towards Otis. But they're like small operations.
Yeah, I wonder, yeah, I, just the space that's available may, there may not be an issue. You really can't put something huge there anyway.
No, but but, I mean, there's a, there's a ton of wetlands down there. And I believe there's no. Sewer in that part of town. Uh, there may be water, but there's no sewer, and usually if you're gonna put in a larger installation, they wanna be somewhere on a sewer line.
Got it. Okay.
A- actually, there is um something else to consider is that there is some land down there that could potentially change. Ownership. There's the farm on the corner of Otis and Davis, pretty sizable piece of land, and if that were to leave the. Family farm and become something else, you'd be, you wanna have something in place to regulate that. And um on Bob's comment, there is sewer down there because they ran it from Davis Ave all the way over to the mall. Down uh Fair, Tomlin Hill Road to Route twenty. Uh, then they built that pump station in front of uh BJ's Gas Station there.
Okay.
And I also think for the board to consider is just because you have an existing business there, I'm looking at the parcels of land. You might look at like Teamworks as a very significant large parcel of land. You know. Walmart, those are, that's down in Business South, although Walmart might be on the. Highway side, but what I'm just saying, I'm looking at parcels of land. I'm not looking at who's there now.
Right.
Typically with zoning, that's what you look at. It's the parcel of land.
So with that in mind, should we leave it, does the board feel that we leave it as a special permit? Michelle, yes, okay, so that um, that correction will be made. Um, I have a follow-up, I added the question about, uh, to take care of the committee. Anything else on this one that we wanted to follow up on?
Removing the language on building permit.
Oh, yes, thank you. Um, so that would, a question about special permit and building permit. Okay.
Can I go back to also where you see, you you talked something about the last mile?
Yes, that's in the definitions, so hold on.
Let's see what that is.
Sure. The delivery station.
In definitions, okay, so you didn't have that in your table of uses?
Well, I didn't.
I don't think so, unless it was under parcel distribution?
Oh, no, it is, it's the last line.
Oh, there it is. Okay, I was looking for last mile, I guess, yeah, so, um. Oh, yeah, I see where you took it out. Okay, never mind.
Okay, so we have a couple of open items here, but uh pending those open items. Um, is any further discussion on this one? Okay, is there a motion to move this forward, the? The both pass, moratorium definition, bylaw amendment from one thirty one. Uh, pending town council and public hearing. Second?
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor, Amy?
Hi.
Millie?
Hi.
Michelle?
Yes.
Anthony?
I.
And Carrie's an I. Okay, the next one we have to discuss is the use variance, so I don't think I made any changes to this one. This was just a matter of deciding, I think at this point, but um, actually, I'm gonna make sure, just if we had any additional questions for town council. Um, I don't think so. Nope, there wasn't. Okay, so for this one, I think it's just a matter of how does the board feel about it? We had a discussion last. We, a couple of weeks ago with the ZDA, oops, I'm gonna share this in a second. Further discussion for the board on this one?
I think I just let it go to the town meeting and see what they decide, because I feel like we already, we discussed it the last meeting.
Okay, do we wanna let voters talk it out and decide?
We're gonna still take a vote from the board.
Of course, yep.
I, I do wanna remind the board that the ZDA was not in favor of this at all. The majority of those ZDA members. Asked that you not do this and said that they use this to help property owners um who are in a difficult position um to. You know, possibly do something different with their property, and it's never been abused, and they. Almost majority asked you not to move forward with this.
So one thing I wanted to share. Let's see. Any other other feedback while I'm looking for this document here? Let's see. I had looked at the last application that came through for a use variance, just to see what exactly are. Landowners, what is the hardship out there? What are landowners looking at when they say they wanna get a use variance? And I'm sorry, I just need to um toggle a few screens. To find that. I know this is painful.
But Carrie, we went through this before, when we went to town meeting, and we went and looked at it from two thousand two up until the last time it was discussed. And the same consensus came out of that was that it was a, it was a tool that the ZDA was allowed. To use to give relief to property owners, and it was never abused upon. And they just felt like, you know, to take it away would be a hardship on property owners.
Right, so what I wanted to say, okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, to pull out one that just doesn't look at the big picture.
Well, I just wanted to get a idea of what exactly. Um, for the people facing hardships, what are they actually considering and looking out for hardships? So I went through. And I looked at, these are for, this is real, from a real application. And just in terms of identifying, first of all, meeting the criteria of a variance, how are they. Laying out the data and facts that show that they meet the criteria, which equals. They must have, it must meet soil conditions, shape or to to geography. All three have to be met, and these are the kinds of answer, these are the kinds of submissions that we're getting, which doesn't really. Tell us much, and then when looking at what's the hardship, this is the hardship listed, which. Also doesn't really say anything about why a variant should be granted. And then the facts that support it were also. There's nothing here that is is making me feel like. Landowners are being prevented from doing something for these awful hardships, because I, there's no application where I can find evidence of. These hardships that exist, so that's what worries me a little bit about the, how the use variance is being. Maybe not used as a tool by the ZDA, but perceived as an available tool. It shouldn't be that you think. The hardship is is this, or it it needs to be significant, and it's not coming across as significant to me, so I just wondered. What the board thought about that in terms of. Does that prevent us from, like I said before, if we want something allowed in a district, why don't we just allow it? Why would we have people go through this process, which doesn't seem like a real process at all? I don't know, thoughts on that?
Well, just like the process we're going through now, we're talking about all these bylaws. And they go to town meeting for town meeting to decide, is this a use that should be allowed or not allowed in the district? Where the. Where the use variance is a group of five people that say, okay. Should this use be allowed or not allowed? Maybe it should be, it should go to town meeting like you're saying, and then. It's just skipping over, it's, it's allowing you to use to change on his own, and like you're saying, it's not for a hardship. Then, then why aren't they having to go to town meeting like others are having to go to town meeting?
Yeah, um, so, uh, I, the, I think the one thing that was brought up last time is that the towns around us are. Still allowing use variances, and I sent the board, um, Southborough was an example that went to town hall, I think last year, and I'm sorry, twenty sixteen, actually. And that was something that the town brought forward for similar reasons, and it passed by a landslide. I think it was over four hundred in favor and twenty-five against, not that that means that Northborough is the same, but. Um, I think the perception was. If we want something allowed, let it allowed and let the voters vote, don't circumvent the voters, what the voters wanna see in each district. So that's what I worry about.
And in the community development plan, and once the changes were made in two thousand and nine, the consultant said to the town. To get used, rid of the use variance, because now you've updated your bylaws for what you wanna see and how you want the town to proceed. So you should get rid of the use variance, and I went to a class on economic development in the downtown. And it said that a use variance is a loophole, to ever meet your goals. You should get rid of the use variance. So, I mean, if we're gonna trust consultants. To point us in the right direction to go, then a use variance is a loophole to override anything. That might be recommended. And so I just think that, in my opinion, I think the people in town should be able to have a voice and decide.
How does the board feel about letting the town? Vote on it? Is that something we want to put forward for a vote, or we're just, we don't stand behind it at all, and we don't wanna put it up?
I, again, I don't think it's, it's, um. I don't, I don't know that it's harmful to put it forward. I do think it's important that people that are voting understand the pros and cons. And, um, you know, I think if we have information on. Where the use variance has been applied and it's been helpful, I think that's important to bring forth and where it's been detrimental. So I think if we have examples, not necessarily naming property owners, but situations. Because I think without those, I think it's, it's difficult to really weigh the pros and the cons.
Right. Other side, Michelle, you're not in favor, it sounds like overall, are you in favor of even bringing it forward, or you don't even wanna bring it forward?
Not in favor.
Okay, and Anthony?
So I, I think it would be important, I saw, I do believe, um, we should let the voters decide. Um, and I do think in, in the explanation at town meeting or in advance. Um, we need to do a little training course on what the hardships are and what the criteria is for variance, so they understand. Um, you know, the variances really should be very difficult to, to be, uh, allowed or approved. So, um. I, I think it would be a great idea for let the, the voters be educated and then let them make the decision.
I thought of the material you shared with us, Carrie, was really helpful. To describe it.
Okay.
You sent down an email and it had documents attached, I think there was a special permit in variance, and it described what a variance was. There were a couple of things that you sent out to the board, but I think maybe. After these, like before the public hearing, maybe we could have put up on our planning board page. All the zoning articles and any materials that go with it. So anybody who wants can go online.
Because we have the traffic, um, reports, I think people would like to see as well.
Yep, any information that we use to get to where we are today, you know, for the, for these changes.
Okay, so is there a motion to put this forward pending town council and public hearing? The use variance amendment as of one thirty-one?
So much.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Michelle?
No.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, I think we are down to, what do we have, enforcement, is that the last one? Do we have others?
I think that's it.
Okay, all right, I don't have, um. Oh, and there were quite a few questions, I think, for town council, so I can cover that. Amy, do you have a copy of the latest version?
Sure, and that, my questions, I, I had the questions for town council. Um, I just wanted town council to review it and see if it was needed or if it's not needed.
Okay, did you wanna, you're welcome to speak to your own questions, I was just gonna look it up to make sure I covered them all, but.
Pretty much my questions were, um, it was just, I think Bob had mentioned that it had already gone to town council. And I just asked him if it, you know, if he reviewed it and what comments he had. And, um, if he had comments, if he could just explain.
Okay.
You know, because these are, again, things that a lot of other towns had, so. If we don't need them, I just wanted to tell us why we didn't need them.
Okay, so we're looking for advice on council, um, on whether we need this.
And I did do an update on the enforcement request section because, um. You know, Bob says he likes to give the people time, which is great, to remediate the issue, so. For part A. It's, it didn't change, for part B, I actually updated it to be, this is B one. If the building inspect, I don't know if I need to read it. But instead of, um, I guess people had concerns with immediate, so. If the Bob finds any violation, within two weeks, he should give notice and writing to the owner. Which I think you usually do, Bob, I think that's what you, like, two weeks, and then also give the owner. Time to remediate. And then if he doesn't choose to start remediating the issue, then we go to the penalty section, which is, is pretty basic.
The state actually gives me six years. To send out an enforcement letter before, before there's no available enforcement to be had on an issue, okay? We do like to have things cleared up quickly, I do have some zoning things that are ongoing that takes, as I said, on Coburn Street, four years. Okay? Um, one of the things that we do. You know, the fifteen days to correct their infractions, you know, taking down a sign is a phone call, it can happen the same day. Uh, sometimes if somebody's doing a giant operation and we've gotta get them out of there. You know, they may need thirty days depending upon whether and size of equipment they may need to fix the infraction. Um, that's why I'm saying, you know, on average fifteen days is good, but, um, there are gonna be times when. You know, we may need more time, and the question is, what happens if we go over the fifteen days?
Yep, what about begin to, you know, it doesn't have to be finished, but say that at least some sort of process starts.
Well, they need to be, be making forward progress to correct their violations.
Right.
And that, in ninety-five percent of the time, that is exactly what happens, you know, and, and they eventually get it done. Um, I had one in town where somebody was actually, he had, he was a landscaper, he was doing work in his own yard. And we got complaints saying that he's running a contracting business out of there, well, he kind, he was, but he was also working on his own home. And it was gonna take him a couple of months because he's doing this backyard project on his own time. So, you know, I had to monitor this person and go over there and. You know, kinda watch what he was doing on, like, on a twice weekly basis. You know, until he finally complied with everything and he got the machinery out of there, when his, when his home project was done, and that took a couple of months. But at the end of the day, the situation was fixed.
Anything else on this one? I guess the biggest thing is really just getting back from council to figure out. What makes sense in this case.
I actually sent out, um, like, a B one and a B two. And I just wanted, I know, I, I changed it, I wanted to update it, because B one and B two was, was confusing after I read, um. The enforcement that was forwarded to us today, so. I just wanted to update it just to match what happens, you know what?
Okay, and Fred, oh, go ahead, Amy, sorry.
Oh, sorry, but maybe town council will have, you know, input on what, you know, maybe it doesn't have to be updated. Maybe it needs to be thirty days versus fifteen days, just his opinion. Maybe we drop it all together.
So Fred, are you there? I can't.
Yes, sir, I am.
There you are. Um, is it possible, I think we've done this in the past through Kathy, where we hold a spot on the warrant, and then. Like, if we're waiting for, so in this, we're waiting for a significant weigh-in from town council, not just a couple of words. Is it possible to just have a placeholder if we don't have any answers from town council by the third?
I believe so, I can talk to the town administrator tomorrow, I know that deadline is February third, but I think there are several other. Articles that are still being worked on, I, I think the placeholder was. Um, to make sure there's room on the warrant and how it's gonna line up. Clearly, all the zoning stuff usually goes together in one section of the warrant, but I think if, um. If we have an idea of how many, it's easier to have. An extra one and take it out than it is to try to squeeze another one in.
Got it, okay, so it sounds like, um, that's a big component of this one moving forward. Anything else, Amy, to point out?
No, can I, I just forward you this one, um, tomorrow, just to run it by town council.
What I, what I would ask, if it's, if you don't mind, Carrie, is that, um, tonight. Amy sent a revised version of a couple of the articles at the beginning, she just changed a few things alphabetically, ordering them and some other things. Um, I have a list of seven that we talked about tonight, and I was wondering if, um. If I have that correct, and if you have any other questions for town council, if you could let me know. I forwarded the email that you sent yesterday with the questions and the, um, three attachments that were with that. I wanna make sure that I have the most up-to-date version of what it is you want him to look at and. The questions that go with them, so if they're, after tonight's meeting, I think there might be a few extra questions and a few revisions. At least to the signed by law, there were some things that Amy, I think, was gonna take out, so if we could get a clean copy that way. I can tell him to just disregard the previous email and start with this one or transferring comments he had on those. So we're all looking at the exact same thing, because I don't know about all of you, but I've now got a stack of. Proposed signed bylaws, craft brewery information, and a bunch of other stuff that I'd like to pare down to. What we really want him to look at.
Okay, that's a good suggestion, why don't we'll do that? Okay, so in that case, anything else on this one? No? Okay, and we got covered everybody's bylaw. Okay, the bond.
I'm sorry, nope, not quite to the bond yet, the floodplain bylaw. I don't have it to give to you tonight, but I have been going back and forth with the. Um, state floodplain, uh, floodplain coordinator, uh, to make sure the bylaw that, the language that she wants in there is in there. And incorporate it into our bylaw, try not to take out any more of our bylaw than necessary. But trying to make sure all the conflicts are taken out, I think we have it pretty well narrowed down, I wanna sit with Bob. And then send it to town council, but it is just about ready to go, uh, to the town administrator, so I'll send it to you as soon as I have it completed. But it, it is ninety-nine percent done, uh, today.
Okay, so if we have a public hearing in March.
It'll be ready for that.
Okay, good, because I think we usually send the whole packet for people to look at before the public hearing, okay, great.
My goal was to try to get it ready, uh, by tonight, didn't quite hit that, but to get it to the town administrator by the third. And then have it to you, so you could all look at it at least a, a one meeting before your public hearing, if not two, to review it and make sure you. Understand what we're talking about, not a lot of leeway here, I'm just putting in what they've asked us to have for languages. The tricky part is making sure we're not sacrificing anything that's currently in our bylaw that we would wanna keep.
Got it, okay, while you're already on a roll, do you wanna get into the bond?
I do, um, you all have the letter that I.
You need me to pull it up?
Uh, if you would like.
There we go.
So. As we talked about last meeting, the subdivision is Clark Woods on Wash, off of Washburn Street, Harrington Lane. Um, we currently have a bond of two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars being posted. Um, the developer has been, uh, moving fairly slowly, not just because of. Um, his own thing, but the economy and. Sales and COVID has kind of, uh. Hit him pretty hard, so he has now, uh, teamed up with a, another. Person who's building the houses and helping him finish the construction, they've installed the, the base coat went in. Prior to last winter, uh, but they never put in the curbing, so the drainage wasn't fully functioning. Because the water wasn't able to get into the catch basins, uh, properly, so by putting in the curbing, they've created the gutter. And the, all the water is flowing properly through the drainage system, they did put in the base coat for the sidewalk. Um, and, uh, utilities are all in. So what I have before you is what I feel is appropriate for them, for you to hold as a bond to complete the, the subdivision now. Uh, the way it works is, uh, he would then go build the houses now, I, which I believe he's planning to do in the next. Four or five months with his new partner, and then, um, plan to put the top coat of pavement on. Put in the trees, finish the, the landscaping, verify the as-built plans, and then, uh, wrap up the subdivision, uh, at some point. Hopefully later this year or next year, um, but the, uh. One thing I wanted to point out is that I know that the developer may have been expecting more money, but because the bond was originally posted. Uh, several years ago, the cost of asphalt has gone up. Uh, enough so that I recalculated the amount to put the top coat on the sidewalk and the roadway, and that. Um, reduced the amount of money that I would recommend that you reduce the bond by. Uh, in years past, we kinda let it roll, it didn't adjust very much every year, so we let it roll, and then, um, next thing you know, ten. Fifteen years go by and the bond's not adequate, so in order to keep it adequate, uh, I've adjusted that money that you should hold back, so. I would, um. Ask you to vote to reduce the bond to one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars.
Okay, any board questions? Okay, is there a motion to reduce the bond for Clark Woods from two hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars. To one hundred and nineteen thousand dollars? Second?
Second.
All in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, so that's that, um, is, did everyone have a chance to read the minutes from January fourth? That was something we tabled from last time, are we set to vote on them tonight?
I'm good.
Any amendments to the minutes? Oh, Amy?
I actually had emailed them out before the last meeting, but, um, I don't know if anyone got a chance, but I can share mine. I haven't read them since last time, so hopefully I don't surprise myself. Um, okay. And I'm trying to, I don't know if I can make it smaller. Hold on a second. Okay, sorry. It's really big, but. So the first one I had was thirty-seven South Street. I had asked Fred if. I had asked Fred if the amended zoning map needs to be presented at town meeting. Mr. Litchfield stated the map is amended. It just made, there was a sentence kind of missing to put it in perspective. I I saw this as an extra word. Um, Downy Breweries, um, downtown business, businesses and business west, I just added the word business. Um, I just said Ms. Pritzky placed brewery definitions under hospitality and food services. They just made, there were a couple of sentences I added that just put in some context to what some of the answers were. Um, commercial uses and industrial, it said Mr. Zein didn't submit any information to the board. He wasn't there that night. And we weren't waiting for information for him. So I didn't think that made sense. I don't know about you, Anthony, it just, I didn't think we're waiting for any information from you for commercial uses and industrial.
That's correct.
I think the reason that was put in there was because Carrie asked that Anthony had brought this up and that he hadn't had brought any information to the board. And maybe that's why she took it off, um, the video. Should we go back and look?
I don't remember Anthony bringing it.
I'm okay with, yeah, he did. He talked about that before when we talked about in the beginning. I'm okay with taking it out, but she just didn't randomly put it in, that's why.
Um, I just added this statement that I said. Ms. Pritzky stated other boards are discussing recommendation goals that fall under their boards. This isn't, I just, the, a discussion the M P I C will be having in the near future as the focus right now is downtown. Ms. Pritzky mentioned Mr. Leif is asking for housing money through C P C at this year's town meeting, and that didn't go through M P I C. Ms. Jewett stated previously that the planning board has money for consultants and maybe this is something they can use it for. It was just a statement I made under warehouse and trucking. Ms. Pritzky mentioned the previous moratorium, solar marijuana duplexes the purpose of the moratoriums were allowed a brief hold while data was gathered to write bylaws that were appropriate for Northborough. And that was it. And I can send it to Melanie if you want. I don't know if anybody else has changes.
Any other amendments? Not, okay. Uh, motion to approve the January fourth minutes as amended?
The move.
Second, second, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Um, I did not review the minutes from the eighteenth yet, but if the rest of the board is ready to vote, I'm happy to open that up. Would the rest of the board like to vote on the minutes? On the eighteenth, or if everyone else read them, we can call a vote.
I didn't read them either.
I did not.
Okay, so if it's okay with the board, why don't we table them? I don't think we have other business. I wouldn't, I'd like to open it up to public comments, just we had a lot to discuss tonight and we did that last time. So we'll allow the opportunity again. If anybody, we've covered quite a bit. There's also the public hearing as well that, um, anyone will have the ability to comment on any of the bylaws. But if there's anything tonight, I will take comments. And I don't see any comments tonight, so that's okay. Hold on, there is. Okay, hold on, I'm gonna bring you over. Hi, Lisa, can you hear me?
I can, hi, Carrie, Lisa Moselli, thirteen Maple Street. Um, I just wanted to, I just wanted to kind of re- revisit a remark that said often that businesses are are being pressured or put under a hardship or something for these zoning bylaws that go into place. And I find it hard to believe that signage would be anything that would create a hardship for businesses. You know, we, most of our businesses that are on Main Street are right on the Main Street. You can see the businesses, you can almost see inside when you drive by. And I don't think that, uh, you know, how, trying to give our town a a more unified look is a bad thing. But that's certainly something for the voters to say when they go to town meeting. And the purpose, and I'm gonna read this out of the zoning bylaw book. Purposes of zoning bylaws are to promote the general welfare of the town of Northborough, to protect the health and safety of its inhabitants, not just its businesses, to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the town to provide for adequate light and clean air and to limit pollution and to serve the natural, historic, scenic and aesthetic qualities of the town. And I think, I'm not gonna read the rest of it, but I think we need to start looking at it that way and not have this tug of war all the time between businesses and residents. I think that we all have a stake in the town and we all care about our town. And I think that when you start looking at environmentally, what's happening with lighting and all of the stuff that's going with commerce, that we have to start looking at what we can do to protect the people and the town. And I think to battle all the time because of us, a word or a thought and and act like it's it's going to hurt the businesses, that's really not what we're supposed to be doing. The planning board is not here to take care of the businesses. They're here to take care of the town. And, um, and I find that, you know, that gets to be a little difficult to watch this tug of war all the time. So I just wanted to make that comment and thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. See, okay. All right, I don't see any further comments. Uh, our next meeting is February fifteenth and March first. By the way, do we, do we think March first is the better meeting for the public hearing? Do we think we, it's a month from now, so we should get back to answers. Does that sound like the right timing?
I don't know now, I'm almost thinking the fifteenth, just in case, you know, people want to read the floodplain or say there's questions from town council and we have more questions. I don't know, is it?
Maybe we can judge, we have one more meeting in between anyway. So maybe we can see where we're at next time and figure, oh, Fred, go ahead.
I just wanted to let you know, I believe that, um, there's an application for a special permit coming. And I think they're shooting for a meeting on March first for a public hearing on that site plant. Just so you know, it's coming.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that makes.
Did you hear anything about a planner? Any, has, um?
I don't have any news to share, no.
All right.
All right, so there's no further business, I don't believe, Fred, no A and Rs or lot releases or anything like that?
Uh, no.
All right, motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Anthony?
Aye.
And Carrie's an aye, meeting adjourned. Thanks so much, everybody, have a great night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.